Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council's Special Meeting and Regular Workshop. The council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At special meetings, the council takes formal action on specific items and during the workshops, only discusses the issues with no formal action taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-dashwa.gov/agenda. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum cable in Pasco and Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, Nagget, roll call please.
Yes. Councilmember Campos?
Present.
Milne?
Present.
Roach?
Present.
Serrano?
Here.
Torres?
Present.
Mayor Protan Maloney?
Present.
And Mayor Barajas?
Present.
And with that, thank you. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we're going into our special meeting. We do have a special meeting going on this evening. Item four, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there to public hearing and ordinance for the Ike Meyer Rowdy Roundy annexation. And we have some comments from Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is an item on the annexation for the Ike Meyer and Roundy properties. The location is generally those lands adjacent to Road 68, Broadmore Boulevard, Road 100, between the existing Pasco city limits and the expanded urban growth area. It encompasses approximately 1,800 acres. The owners of these properties submitted a notice of intent to commence annexation on April 8th of this year. Council approved Resolution 4177, accepting the notice on May 2nd. And the Franklin County Assessor certified the petition made by the property owners, which was submitted on May 18th. So the annexation will allow for the continued implementation of the Pasco Comprehensive Plan. It's also in conformance of the Franklin County Comprehensive Plan. The following agenda item on the sewer LID also helps with the implementation of both Comprehensive Plans as well with regarding urban levels of density and service, et cetera. The annexation encompasses a variety of land use classifications identified in the future land use map in the Pasco Comprehensive Plan. And following the decision today, the Pasco Hearing Examiner will conduct a zoning determination for the proposed annexation area that establishes zoning districts for the lands and ensures its conformance of the Comprehensive Plan's future land use map. A recommendation of that will be forwarded to City Council at that time. So very short presentation, but happy to answer any questions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will be opening a hearing. And so I ask anyone that has any comments this evening to please sign in if you've not done so yet. So with that, do we have any questions or comments from our council before I open the hearing? Yes. Council, Mayor Protan Maloney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Barajas. And Mr. Gonzalez, just a real quick question on the overall annexation here. We're talking about the zoning determinations that will be provided that will go through the process with the Hearing Examiner. Will that be for all of the land that's been annexed in, even for temporary uses? Or is it like, how, can you explain that process a little bit? How does that work through and what input will be getting from the Hearing Examiner? What input would they be receiving?
Yep. So the city staff will work with the property owner first off to ensure that they are okay with the proposed zoning determinations to establish on their specific property. That goes through the Pasco Hearing Examiner. There's a public hearing associated with that. So everybody gets a notice within a specific area surrounding the property that's the subject of the zoning determination. So it does go through its own separate public process as well.
Will it be done en masse or property by property?
That is to be determined. It might be a combination of both, I assume.
Okay. I appreciate that. I think that's all the questions I had for the annexation portion. Thank you.
Before we move further into the comments, I do want to announce that we do have a translator, Mr. Hugo. If you need translation services... Si usted necesita servicios de traducción, por favor, busca al señor Hugo. Sientese cerca del señor Hugo. If anyone has any, wants to refer someone for translation services, please send it forward to Mr. Hugo here in the front. And also, your comments tonight will be referred only to the subject matter. Sir, do you have a question? We're not at the comment section yet, if you'd like to take a seat.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from our council? Okay. And with that, we will open our hearing.
For the annexation.
For the annexation. We'll open the hearing for the annexation of the Ike Meyer Roundy annexation. So with that, do we have any questions or comments from anyone that has signed up for a comment?
Can I get up now?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is K.R. Mars.
The button.
Yeah, turn it on.
Okay, I'll try it again. My name is K.R. Mars. I live on Farm Unit 97, Lot 1. My property is on, off of Dent Road, north of Dent Road. I would respectfully like to be withdrawn from this annexation. I do not need any more taxes. I'm taxpayer now. I have a family that likes to hunt and as far as I'm concerned, if you have city ordinance, you cannot discharge firearms. So that means there's no more hunting on my property or practice target shooting. I understand urban growth plan, but urban growth does not have to be in the city limits to be a plan. I do have some buried pipe from the irrigation department that supplies water to my land and to all other farmers north of me. And you would not be able to build on this, over the top of this pipeline because you just can't. They already have leaks in it now, so I'm not sure how that's going to happen. And when we first had this growth, I asked if anybody had talked to the Bureau of Reclamation, and at that time, nobody has. I had not heard anything about these prior meetings of this request for annexation. If they want to have their annexation, that's fine with me, just exempt me from that area. Also, to me, a better plan would be the Dent Road is the boundary rather than jumping around in where are you going now. Excuse me, I do have a cold. Also, I noticed on there that you have me down for 246 acres. I'm paying tax on 280, so I don't know what portion of my land you're not taking in. So also, I see some dips in there. I don't understand what that dip is for. Can I point it out to you?
He just get right there.
Does anybody have it?
Button, I'm sorry. I don't sure what that was for.
Can you please press the button again?
Dip? I guess it just didn't come on red. I gotta watch for the red. All right, thank you. So again, I respectfully ask to be removed from that portion of annexation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter?
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Stephen Baumann. I live here in Pasco. Question that I would have is, does this annexation create any donut holes? And if it does, I would encourage you not to do it quite in that way, but to grow contiguously so as not to create more donut holes. That has caused a lot of headache for the city and for developers. And would encourage you to not create additional donut holes. Thank you.
Thank you. Second call for comment on this matter. Third and final call. Please state your name and your address for the record.
I'm Patrick Dean. I live on 271 Easy Street. I'm Mr. Mars's neighbor and I own a welding business and I do a lot of welding in my driveway. And if it be possible to exclude me from this as well, being city people don't really like to listen to welders all night long, so just be a good idea if I could get excluded, I would appreciate that as well.
Thank you for your comment.
And I also have a buried irrigation line that runs through his property as well, so that would probably be problems as well.
Can you show us on the map where exactly you're talking about? Your property and his?
No, we're gonna have to come around, sorry.
I am right here in this corner. I got the only triangle piece. And I got an irrigation line that runs through his hayfield to my property. And, yeah.
So what's Mr. Mars's property like?
I believe it's all of this here.
Thank you. Last call for comments on this matter.
My name's Jeff Pittman.
If you can press the button until it turns red. There you go.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Jeff Pittman. I live on 7608 Byers Road. And currently, the way your map, proposed map is, that would be a donut hole. And myself and probably most of the neighbors in that area would prefer to stay in the county. And that is my main request, is that that Byers Road development does stay in the county. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, sir, I'm not familiar with all the county roads. Sir, are you talking about, is it to the carve out that's currently to the west directly below where it says Dent Road there? Okay.
That area right there that's been carved out.
Great, thank you.
I guess the light is on. My name is David Wilson. I own Unit 75 right on the corner of Dent Road. And it's 155 acres, quarter section. But I am definitely in favor of annexation. We purchased a property many, many years ago, but has, we've already developed across Dent Road, Quail Bluff, doesn't run, that was our development. And we would like the opportunity to develop. Whether you're in the city or not, you don't have to develop, but in order to develop, you need to be in the city because we need water. And in order to do that. So I am very much in favor of the annexation. Thank you.
Sir, for our benefit, could you also point out your property? It would just, it's hard for me to remember where everything's actually. Would you mind pointing out, just for our, thank you so kindly.
I can find it. It's this property right here.
Thank you.
I'm done.
You're done, okay. Looks like this thing's still on?
Yes, it is.
My name is Devin Libbert. I live at 7724 Byers Road. And I'm also part of that donut hole. And I would ask that I would maintain county status. And I'm also curious about the road planning, school planning, just because I have lots of concerns. I know a lot of residents have concerns about schools, where we build schools and then the next year there's portables. So I'd just like all that laid out and understood by you folks. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you can hear me now, okay. My name is Christian Ford and my wife and I live off of Cow Trail, which is, and mainly I just have three main concerns. One being, I wanted to make sure that people understood, or that you folks understood that the properties are all short-plotted for large enough for self-sustaining sewage systems. And most of these systems are fairly new. I know this because I've worked on a couple of the systems and I've talked to the current health department about them. And so, as well as, you know, if we need water, we can always drill a well. So I am in favor of staying with the county. However, I can see the amplifications that, you know, maybe wouldn't affect as much if we went into the city depending on how you zoned us. So that brings me to my point two, which is a financial hardship. So we're talking about charging a lot of these landowners for both the landowners and the farms that are alike in these areas.
Sir, sir, if you keep your comments to the annexation only.
To the annexation only.
We'll address the LID.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Okay. So mostly, I'm concerned about rezoning and developing. If you're going to develop farmland, it, when you annex certain areas and they may be short-plotted for smaller areas, many times, those are the only areas people can get a start at farming. They can't just go out and buy a pivot. 120 acres is a lot harder to purchase than, say, a five acre or a 10 acre parcel. So you're basically cutting certain people out from being able to do that and to be able to grow from there in farming. And the third is, I have some environmental concerns with development as well. And reducing the farmland in this area will also, may affect the water table in the area as well. And I'm a little concerned about that, meaning, you know, some of the wells may not be as deep, especially if they're irrigation wells. And not, you know, when we develop certain areas, that water will change and it'll be harder on farmers as well. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any further comments?
My name is Jeff Lotto. I live at 7216 Desiree Drive. This property is, oh, where are we here?
I think you're, you gotta come back closer, you're in.
More to my right? Yeah, okay. So we're right in here. So my question as far as the annexation, I have lots of questions on the LID. However, my question on the annexation is, why are we pushing this right now so fast, so hard, misinformation being given, when this is still disputed property as far with future-wise and their argument against the rural residential status as it stands? We're waiting for an appeal to be upheld or overturned. Why are we doing this now while this is still in adjudication? They're saying this land out there is set as long-term agriculture. It was said as that when I bought my property. It has been set that way. Now you get portions of this land being sold to developers and schools, and their first act is, well, we don't meet the current zoning, but we'll change the zoning. That is why I believe we're here. We're wanting to change the zoning, annexation, for that reason, to develop. However, it's been stated, it's in adjudication, this is termed as long-term agriculture land. I would hope that you would take that in consideration in your decisions to annexation. Thank you.
Greetings, City Council. My name is Shane Gully. I'm off of Cow Trail 70, 7021, in fact, so just down from Mr. Ford there. My wife and I moved out there with our family to have farm life. We have chickens, we have a small orchard, and we have 36 solar panels that power most of what we need. We have it well, we're on septic. We weren't looking to be tied in. What you're doing with annexation is eliminating our dream. I'm so glad that we can give somebody else a dream, but not at the expense of others. What you're literally demanding is that we give up our rights on our land so that you can give those to somebody else. I will stand opposed to this annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments regarding the annexation? With no further comments, I will now close the hearing. And with that, do I have any other discussion from our council members? Mr. Ferguson, is there any further recommendations?
Let's see, so the, I'll defer to Mr. Gonzalez as the expert with regard to the maps and the areas. I believe the only options in front of council tonight are to go forward with the ordinance as written. The council, after, the statute makes it clear that after a hearing, the council can adopt any or all portions of the annexation that was proposed as long as it was included in the petition. So now, that's a clunky process because we can't really do that on the fly because we have a legal description that's part of the ordinance. So that would take some time to go back and, Mr. Gonzalez, please stop me when I'm getting out of my league here. So, but I definitely think that this evening, the only option is to move forward with this ordinance, but I'll defer to Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I just want to address the comments regarding the development that could potentially occur, that that would occur at the property owner's request. We aren't building anything. The lands within the proposed annexation are within the city's established urban growth area boundary, which was adopted by Franklin County. The urban growth boundary and our future land use map was adopted by, or approved by Franklin County, so it's in conformance of the Franklin County Comprehensive Plan. And the city, there's no project associated with any of these, with any of the lands within the annexation. So at a project-specific application, city staff will evaluate that project and ensure that it goes through the appropriate process, and particularly the State Environmental Policy Act, which is the environmental mitigations associated with any kind of project. So hopefully, that provides some clarity for council and those in attendance this evening.
Thank you. Mayor, may I ask a? Go ahead, Councilwoman Roach.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, is this item proposed by Ike Meyer and Roundy landowners? Is this why it's here in front of us today?
Yeah, the city received a notice of intent for a petition for annexation, so we're just moving forward with that process.
So if they've initiated, are they present to speak on their application, their initiation of this?
I'm not sure, to be quite honest, but if they are, there certainly might be an opportunity for them to speak, depending on council's wishes.
It would be great to hear from the applicant themselves if they are here.
So just for clarification, so the process that we've engaged in thus far to get to this point, after receiving the 10% request, the notice of annexation, of intent to apply for annexation, then at that point, we held a meeting with the initiators. That's a technical description of it, but essentially, at that point, that was when council went through their process to determine what they believed the annexation area, the proposed annexation area would be, and then what the other requirements were going to be for that. Subsequently after that, then the petition goes out and the petition is, obtains 60% of, is it assessed value, Mr. Gonzalez, I believe, so it's 60% of assessed value in the annexation area to get to this point. So just a quick reminder of kind of what's gone up to this point. This is the public hearing portion, so folks can make the council aware of their agreement or disagreement.
Thank you. So I guess my other comment, it doesn't seem like applicants are here to speak on their behalf, but my other comment was that somebody, I believe it was Mr. Baumann, made the comment of not creating donut holes. And I would say that I strongly agree with that. That's something that we're continuing to face as a city today. How do we, how do we bring in utilities? How do we work around what people want to do with their land? And it's, it's just a constant tug of war. And so I don't see that as a good path forward for us with at least one donut hole, that I can tell. If there's any other, there's two, where is the other?
I believe the two county donut holes that will be created here right now, as you'll notice that the Cow Trail development there is excluded from the annexation as well as the over there, further to the left there, right below the Dent Road. So both of those, both of those properties would be, would be donut holes, I believe. Sorry for stealing your thunder, Mr. Gonzalez, but I was looking at this very closely earlier.
Yeah, that's correct. And also, those areas generally are, for the most part, developed. So they're very limited in terms of redevelopment opportunities and also up to the wishes of the property owner themselves. They've been deemed to be left out of this opportunity. You can always annex into the city. So we want to be very sensitive to that as well.
Well, thank you for pointing that out because I hadn't noticed that. I think with the blue city limit lines and the red annexation, I somehow didn't see that one on east of Road 60. But just a quick question too about kind of like the odd line at the northern portion of the annexation and why it is drawn in such a manner.
That was part of the delineation of the urban growth area. If you may recall back during probably most of 2018 through 2020, the city was going through the urban growth area expansion effort. And when we took our application of Franklin County, they requested that we make that delineation kind of in that very odd but very specific shape to align with either a pivot or something that was already there that the county recommended that we do. So we aligned with that as well. So that was then at the request of Franklin County.
Okay. All right, those are just my comments. Thank you. Councilwoman Serrano?
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, can you speak to the gentleman's concern about his welding business and how, you know, potential future land uses could impact that?
Well, they're all evaluated at the time of the applications received by the city. So the city, once annexed, they would be held to the standards of the City of Pasco and our municipal code. So there are, it's a long list of regulations and potential, I don't want to say barriers, but limitations on what you can do regarding adjacency to certain types of uses. But without any project, it's rather hard to get too specific with that.
Okay. And presumably, any other regulation associated with animal life would apply at the time of annexation as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Milne?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a quick question. On the Mars property, why are we, I mean, 280 acres is quite a large amount of land. Why are we putting them in there? Why did we not exclude them? And then also, if you look at the annexation barrier, if that's all his land, wouldn't part of his property still be in the county and the rest in the city? Would that make it kind of confusing or am I reading that part wrong?
No, no, everything that's being proposed for annexation is within the city's urban growth boundary. So it's within our urban area, adopted by Franklin County. It's unincorporated Franklin County for now. And at the time of annexation, obviously, would be under the regulations of the City of Pasco. Ideally, we want to make annexations and urban growth area expansions, we want to make them as contiguous as possible. In a perfect world, that's exactly what we would have. We're working, kind of trying to mesh the best of both worlds here. And so our hope is that through continued refinement and updates of our development standards and collaboration, both with Franklin County and the stakeholders involved in that entire process, that we can have a set of standards that can kind of mesh both exist- that we can have a set of standards that can kind of mesh both existing and along with the proposed growth that we're expecting or anticipating to have here in the city.
Okay, so, on the Mars property, again, so like you say, if he's in the county and then we put him in the city, I mean, what kind of tax difference is he going to be, is he going to be, do you know, like, the difference as far as, or have an idea? I mean, is this going to really cost him a lot of money to be in the city versus farmer in this kind of acreage? I mean, obviously, if you have five acreage, it might be different versus two hundred and eighty acres. Again, it just seems like a massive amount of property that we're throwing into our annexation. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't mean to cut you off. I would not be able to answer the question regarding tax assessments or anything like that this evening.
Okay. And for the annexation, I'm just very concerned that we're putting Mr. Mars and then his other neighbor in this area when they definitely don't want to be. It just seems like we could have done that at a different time. That's my two cents on this, so, thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, and do you have a like for motion or comment?
Comment. Comment anywhere in question, obviously.
Mayor Perdamelone, go ahead and make your comment.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. And, Mr. Mill, I certainly don't have any new calculations, but I know when we were, with conversations around the donut hole area, is that the, that the property taxes ended up being comparable. There wasn't, there was trade-offs in various things, but there wasn't necessarily a big hit for existing homeowners. But that's, you know, of course, a couple of years dated, so I can't. Hopefully, we can get that, unfortunately, we all have the information tied, so it's not like. So, a couple of questions I have, Mr. Gonzalez. One question was raised about irrigation lines. At this point in time, annexation doesn't affect that at all. That'd be, that'd be a development and potentially a zoning impact, but most likely part of an environmental analysis along with the project. Can you, can you just give, make sure the audience and the council have an opportunity to hear a little more, just a high-level version of what that process looks like?
Yeah, for the most part, the city Pasco requires environmental checklist or an analysis on most development applications, actually more, more than our surrounding communities. And the purpose of that is to ensure that at the time of development, whether it's for two homes or a grocery store, whatever it may be, that it can mitigate any potential environmental impacts. So, staff, as of late, has taken very sensitive approach to that, to ensure that we are reviewing these appropriately and making sure that the appropriate stakeholders, both from the Washington State Department of Ecology or the Washington State Department of Transportation, more locally, our utility districts or Pasco School District, for example, they're all notified about these applications and provided an opportunity to provide comment, questions, or justify, I'm sorry, identify their concerns, to make sure that they're identified and then mitigated prior to any ground is broke on any project.
And in addition to that, Mr. Gonzalez, we had, we did a regional EIS, as I recall, as part of our comprehensive plan and adoption of what the urban growth area is. Can you, can you speak at all to what that means and why that matters in terms of environmental impacts?
Yeah, so, at the time of the development of the comprehensive plan and the expansion of the urban growth area, the city, as a lead agency, determined that our own project could create adverse environmental impacts, which required the environmental impact statement. So, that impact statement required, I'm sorry, the scoping notice for that impact statement required the city to evaluate different alternatives, different intensities of growth, also different boundaries, and then identify the appropriate mitigations of that. And a lot of those varied from the development of a transportation plan, an update of our utility planning, looking at our sewer utilities, coordinating with the school district, and working closely with our Parks Department to assure that we have the appropriate open space recreational opportunities out for the expanded boundary. So, the EIS associated with the entire urban growth area already completed at, at a pretty mid, at a mid-level, I would say. But at the project, at the time of any project, you're still required to submit your own application. Now, you can refer to the city's EIS, but you are also required to do an in-depth analysis of your own property and your project-specific impacts to the environment.
Great, I appreciate additional, additional context. And, Mr. Ferguson, I'm going to ask you a quick question, as our, as our attorney. You know, the question was raised about the Futurewise, and I know there's certain things we can talk about. But I'm, I'm not going to hazard any statements regarding Futurewise, and I was hoping that you could help us better understand how that impacts or does not impact this annexation.
I think I will take your lead and not comment on that at this time.
Would you mind giving us, like, a sentence as to why not?
Why I wouldn't what?
Why, why you would not comment at this time, just?
Because it's active litigation, and anything that, that is said in this particular setting could be problematic.
Great, I appreciate that. Thank you. And I think I had one more thing. So, I'll make a couple of statements, mostly for my fellow council members, as well as the community that's paying attention to this. You know, this is one of those areas where we do have definitely conflicting interests in terms of what, what the city needs. What we've been told is the city, we're expected to grow over fifty thousand people, and we need to plan accordingly. We have a housing crisis right now in terms of available housing and housing, and housing costs. Really, the way you build, the way you fix that is you have to build more houses. South and west were hemmed in, you know, south were hemmed in by the river. We can't really expand much to the east, given a number of features there, and so the expansion's north. We've been planning this for, for years and years and years. This is not, not new to, and shouldn't be a surprise to anyone in the vicinity of the city. So, you know, this is one of those things that is, is part and parcel with the long-term planning we've done, the master plan and the comprehensive plan that we adopted years ago, and a lot of long-term efforts, that when we were being told, this is how we have to address the housing crisis we're in. So, I understand that there are some concerns, and, you know, and I think this, the formation of donut holes is something I'm, like my fellow council member Roach, I, I hate the donut holes. I think they cause a variety of concerns and problems, and we're still trying to dig our way out of the donut holes that we, that are in the existing city right now. It's causing a massive amount of impact to our current city taxpayers in terms of investment in planning and other, and other staff resources, just to try to figure out how we can get one or two property owners there served in a way that they can do what they want to do in their land as well. So, this causes, creates a lot of headaches. At this meeting, we, we can't, and we legally can't, and we're not interested in expanding what these are. So, when you look at where those, those current donut holes, if you're in there, I, I think you can rest assured that, that if we adopt this annexation, you will not be brought into the city at this time. So, I, I think that that's something that, that's important to clarify as part of this. So, if you're a property owner in either of those two donut holes, that, there's no action tonight for, for, in terms of you being annexed in. Do you have one last question, Mr. Gonzalez? I apologize for, for having lost track of that one. In our packet, we have a, gosh, I think on page forty, we have, we have a, a list of different properties, and it has a, it's a table. It has a sixty percent petition with, with some X marks along that, with a total up to fifty-one million dollars. Can you speak at all to what that represents? Is that the current property owners within this, this area, and how they might be wanting to be annexed in? I apologize for not being able to point more clearly for you. I think it's not in our presentation tonight.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I, I don't have it on me. I, I hate to answer incorrectly this, this evening as well, but I could follow up with you tomorrow, with council tomorrow, if appropriate.
Well, I think we need to make a decision tonight, so I'm going to have to, we're going to have to wing whatever we got today. But the question, I guess, at the meat of what a question I'm asking is, this petition was not started by the city. This was started by the property owners. What percentage of property owners in the proposed annexation area have requested that the city annex them in to the city?
I, I believe it was over eighty percent. The, as Franklin County Assessor did certify the intent with the, the conformance with the state RCWs regarding how the annexations, the percentage of property owners, and also the percentage of property owners representing a certain amount of the assessed value. So, the Franklin County Assessor has already certified that on May eighteenth.
Okay, so somewhere north of eighty percent of the property owners here have specifically asked to be annexed into the city.
If, Mayor Perdame, if I could just make a point of clarification, it's, it's eighty percent of assessed value. So, I just wanted to be clear.
I appreciate that clarification. So, I think it's, I think a big takeaway of this, of this package and the work that the staff has done is that, is that there's community members, a large number of people, and owning land out here that very much want to be a part of the city. And so, that's what we're responding to with this annexation. As best we can for contiguous and just responsive to the property owners who want to exercise their rights. So, I will be in favor of the annexation as presented tonight. Thank you.
Any further questions? Housewoman Roach?
Just a process question. If we wanted to see a different proposed map, what is the process for council?
So, there is nothing that requires, per statute, that requires council to take action immediately after the public hearing. At, at some point, if you annex, it has to be after the public hearing. That's all the statute requires. So, at this point, if, if council wasn't comfortable with the current annexation ordinance that's in front of it tonight, your option is to either take it up and decline it, or, and not pass it, or you could make a motion, someone could make a motion to set it, to, to continue it to a date certain. And you could take it up then with giving direction to staff to come back with a certain, a certain configuration. We would really need to know what that looks like, though, because at this point, it's, it's hard to know exactly what council's interested in, particularly with regard to legal descriptions and, and parcel numbers. So, that's, that's going to be a very specific task that we would need direction from council to come back with. And so, the motion would need to include that, exactly which parcels that you're anticipating wanting to remove. Or you could bring it up, continue it, and have another discussion on it related to other items, and then keep going with the process. There's nothing that requires you to move forward immediately or at a particular date certain.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Serrano?
Thank you. I know you're not willing to talk about it, but at this point, we don't have, we don't know how to quantify our risk with ongoing litigation. We need not take an action tonight, so, to me, I think we can wait and see where things play out. I mean, if we're talking about potentially designating or de-designating or redesignating ag lands, that could be of significant impact. I think there's, there's a serious concern about that and the future of not the city, but the county's growth as well. So, I'm of the position that we don't have to take this vote tonight. And given the status, there's no sense in voting to approve this at this moment, because it is under pending litigation.
Councilman Campos?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Not to speak to the litigation, but in our packet on page six, that says right in the ordinance for section six, "If any portion's ordinance is declared invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such holding shall not affect the validity of the remaining portion, portions of the ordinance." To me, that seems like the legal room we might need. Again, not to speak to the, but also, again, if I want to clarify, Jacob, it sounds like what we're doing is we are following in line with what our Franklin County Commissioners have put in place, right? And so, again, I kind of think the same thing. Staff has done an immense amount of work on this, this falls in line with what we're being asked by the Franklin County Commissioners to fall through. I'd be in favor of this.
Councilman Mill?
Thank you, Mayor. I just also agree with Serrano. I think that we shouldn't rush in. Again, my major two concerns were the Mars property and then the gentleman next to him doing the welding. I mean, again, it's kind of hard to take away your business. So, I feel if, if those two properties were out, I would be a hundred percent for the annexation, because, I mean, I do realize there is a need for growth, and I just don't think that we should be putting people in the city that are a hundred percent adamant that they don't want to be in our city. So, that's my two cents. I, I don't think there's a, a big thing that we have to rush into this, and so, that's what I'd like to say.
Thank you for that. Mr. Gonzalez, could you please explain if there's individuals that wish to withdraw or not be annexed? They do have that option, correct?
I'd have to defer it up to Eric, actually, on that question.
I guess I'm confused. What was the, if there's people that wish to be withdrawn?
The individuals that are affected, the individuals that spoke tonight, do they have, because they expressed, an option to withdraw?
No.
Or not be annexed?
No. Yeah, so they, the petition went out for the, at our previous hearing, the council adopted a resolution which set the annex, the proposed annexation area. The petition went out, it received over sixty percent, in this case, eighty-two point fourteen percent of assessed value in the area, proposed annexation area. At this point, it's really council's legislative decision to decide whether they want to move forward with the ordinance that was presented in the packet, or if they want to give staff direction to come back with a different ordinance.
And so, my understanding as well is that not only county has done the work, has already made recommendations, but this process has been in the process for some time, and all the residents have been reached out to.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments from our council members, Councilwoman Torres?
Is there a way to amend the motion to exclude the property owner's property without having the parcel number, just by name?
There is a way to do that. I would be very, very careful if we tried to do that. And what I mean by that is, the parcel numbers may not line up with exact areas in the legal description. And the last thing that I would advise is us trying to amend a legal description in a, in a motion. It, we'll get down into the weeds very quick that way. So, there is a possibility to amend it if, if I think council wants to give us some direction about specific parcels that they would like an ordinance to come back not containing. But at this point, I would not recommend that we try to do that on the fly.
So, with that, one more question, Councilman, Mayor Perdamelone?
Yes, thank you. So, Mr. Gonzalez, my recognition is there has been some changes to state law that took effect that will be taking effect sometime in the near term. Is that, do, do we have any member of staff able to speak to that? I certainly believe I've heard that in the past, that there is a relatively near-term timeline. And so, there is incentive for us not to push this off. Not to mention the fact that, again, anyone who wants to be annexed into this property and who has intentions to develop, the longer we push this off, the, the more we're deferring their ability to exercise their private property rights. So, is there any member of staff able to speak to that at all?
Yeah, I can speak to that, Deputy Mayor. The, what you're referring to is there's a statute that was recently signed that dealt with the issue about annexations and expansion of UGAs and the, the process and how that sequence works. It further clarified at what point those, I guess, dates or kind of stopgaps go into effect. In this case, this is obviously based on pre, any kind of pre-legislation that was passed, so it wouldn't be retroactive, it wouldn't apply ex post facto. It would actually, we are currently under the, the current legislative regime, not the, not the coming one.
Is, is that predicated on when we had the hearings and sent out notifications and there was a property owner expressing intent? Or is it based off of when we take legislative action?
Well, there's some debate about that. So, I won't put everybody to sleep with all the nuances of it, but essentially what it comes down to is, when did the county take its action? So, based on the legislation as we interpreted, it was when the county took its action, that passed its, its comprehensive plan or its expanded UGA ordinance. But there's some debate about whether that actually takes place, the date that begins was when the county passed its ordinance, or is it when the annexation takes effect? The safest route, obviously, is to annex prior to that. So, that's the recommendation, but that's certainly the council's prerogative.
Great, I was, I think we were maybe perhaps missing that as the bigger picture, is that there is, there is absolutely a risk to our ability to continue to annex if, based on, on the current process, based on change in state law. If we, if we delay, we might be running up into a, an issue. So, again, I encourage that we do not delay this decision, that we go ahead and move forward. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments for council? With no further comment, can I get a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Barajas. I move to adopt ordinance number four five nine one relating to annexation and annexing certain real property to the city of Pasco and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Perdamelone, seconded by Councilman Campos. All those in favor say aye. Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Serrano?
No.
Campos?
Yes.
Torres? No. Mill?
No.
Roach?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
And Barajas?
Yes.
That's four for yes and three no's.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Gonzalez. And with that, we move on to item B on our agenda, our special agenda. We already closed the public hearing, sir. There's no room for comment. If you wish to make further comment, sir, if you wish to make, sir, if you wish to make further comment, you can address the staff afterwards.
Now, all I'm asking is that, tell me what my next action is. Do I need to hire a lawyer? Do I have to file a suit against the city or the county? No, nobody came to me and said, "Are you interested in going into the city?" No. We had the urban growth thing come up.
Sir, if you can talk to her, thank you. And with that, we move on to item B on our agenda, another public hearing and ordinance for formation of a sewer LID in the east UGA expansion area. And we have Ms. Sarah, Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we are going to have a public hearing on whether or not to form a sewer LID in a certain area of the urban growth area. And as council may recall, last Monday night, staff gave a presentation to council based on comments that were received over several public meetings that were held with property owners in the proposed LID area. And based on those comments, staff presented last week two different options for the boundary of the LID. And the difference between them mostly is the area between Deseret Road and Cow Trail Road is either included in option A or not included in option B. And so with that, I am going to turn it over to our CIP manager, Maria Serra, and she's going to give you details on each of those two options.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This presentation looks very similar to the one that we had last Monday. It has been updated to include some figures with new information that became available in the last week. What you're seeing right now is the east UGA expansion sewer LID area as originally proposed, showed in yellow in the map. And with that, you're seeing also the, what used to be our city limits in red. Now, that limit has been modified through several annexations. And in purple, you're seeing the UGA area. This next slide is a new slide, which answers to some of the questions that were posed last week. And it is showing the land uses proposed in our comprehensive plan for the area in, originally proposed to be included in our LID for sewer. And there is a legend there. We can also refer back to it if you have questions. Now, this next slide actually reflects the comments that we had received up until Wednesday last week. In green, you are seeing the properties that have expressed support for the LID so far. I know you will hear more today in the public hearing. In red are those that have expressed opposition. And of course, there's been some opposition expressed since Wednesday, so those are not quite reflected in this presentation. But hopefully, we can refer back to this slide when people are talking, so you can identify which areas are those. And then in white are the ones that we had not heard from. And finally, you are seeing some hatching and areas that are not hatched. The ones that are hatched are those that are in the process of annexing or have annexed into the city. So I want to point attention to two parcels that are green yet not hatched. And those are two bigger parcels in the neighborhood between Deseret Road and Cow Trail. And then lastly, going to our alternatives, the alternatives are exactly as presented last week. Alternative A is our original alternative, including the whole area with pipelines proposed to serve to the frontage of each parcel. And improvements are gravity sewer mains, a lift station, and then force mains to conduct that flow towards Industrial Way and Capitol Avenue in the eastern side of town. And then these are the details on alternative A, which we went over last week. But again, we are just refreshing estimated cost, $25.4 million for this alternative. And accompanying this is preliminary assessments. And then alternative B, which excludes the majority of the area between Deseret Road and Cow Trail, except for those two bigger parcels that I pointed attention to, which have expressed desire to be connected to sewer and also to annex into the city, yet they're not quite in the process yet. And here's a closer vision to that area. The cost for this alternative is $21.5 million. And accompanying this is preliminary assessments in the same methodology as alternative A. And then this is again, the picture of our landowner expressed preference up until Wednesday of last week. So again, remember, there are some that didn't make the cut in our image. I would like to explain also something that is in the agenda report related to how LIDs work, when there are two types of jurisdiction being encompassed by the LID. And that is that areas within the city will be accounted and the protest will be accounted within the city limits. And then the same happens in the county or the unincorporated area that is proposed to be part of the LID. So there would have to be support in both areas for the LID to be passed in its totality. Otherwise, it could be that the LID passes within the city limits, but not within the unincorporated area. If 60% of the properties within the unincorporated area were to protest this LID after the formation. So today's hearing is for the public to express their support or opposition, and then there is an opportunity to pass one or other alternative or a new version of LID boundary as you see fit.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilman Serrano.
So when you speak to the unincorporated area, based on our last action, that's limited to that grayed-out Cow Trail area, correct?
Yes, let me get back to that slide.
I got a nod from Steve. So, let me just reaffirm what I believe I heard you say. In the event that 60% in the unincorporated area were to oppose this, and it seems like we've got a pretty close record of that, if not completely of that, we could move forward with everything and then just leave that section out.
It would leave out all parcels that are not hatched.
Oh, so it would leave those two out that prefer to be incorporated as well?
That is correct.
And that's if we move forward with A and then have them protest as opposed to moving forward with B, which would include those hatched green parcels, but not the other Cow Trail grayed out, reded out, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Process question about the protest, is that just done by talking directly to those property owners? Or do they have to go to, is it a ballot process?
There is a formal notification of the formation of the LID based on the ordinance that could be passed tonight if council decides to do so. And then each property owner is given 30 days to write a formal protest, which is sent to the city clerk. And then those letters of opposition or protest to the LID are certified and accounted for. The way that the protest, the 60% words for LIDs is based on the assessed value of the proposed improvements.
Thank you. And I ask that question for those of you that are here, that are on Cow Trail and Deseret Drive, I believe, so that you know what the process is if we do go with option A. Thanks. Okay, so before I open the hearing, is there further questions or comments? And I've had Mayor Pretamaloni and then Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you for the presentation. I'd asked a series of questions last week that I think we all ended up getting, I think City Manager Zabel sent out to the full council, the Senate of responses. The item, one item I do want to highlight is under option, the difference between option A and B is some of this westernmost portion of the sewer extension, primarily to the sort of the Cow Trail development and provides some additional, I guess, connecting lines further west. The difference is about $4 million in cost. If you look at the cost just to the developed area there, that's again primarily, that's being, that's the difference between alternative A and alternative B. It's about $2 million to the property owners, about $4 million to the project overall. So about $2 million of that's going to be, you know, absorbed by the rest of the participants in the LID that are in both alternatives. So, just as a note, there's $2 million less cost share if this were to be developed sometime in the future. But I just thought that was really interesting and to see how that all played out. For example, Dairy Gold, one of the industrial developers, that's one of the main reasons why we're doing this, is actually the difference between in alternative A, where there's more area over here to the west, they actually get charged about $600,000 more. So they're actually paying for the, significantly for the sewer over this to the west side. So anyway, so interesting data point there. From my perspective, when I look through what the alternatives are and the clear preference, I'll just jump to my thought here, is I expect to be supporting alternative B unless the majority of the folks here today are going to be suggesting that I go towards A. So, you know, this, as opposed to annexation, this is something where we are directly trying to charge people and putting costs onto individuals, property owners. So, so anyway, so this, based on all the facts I've seen in front of me, including that, I expect to be supporting alternative B in this process, but wait to hear the public on this. Thank you.
Councilman Campos?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off of Zara's comment about process questions. So if I understand right, people who already submitted a petition, case in point, Mr. Lotto's already submitted a petition wanting to exclude himself from his LID. If this were adopted, then a formal notification would need to be made outside of the petition that's already in our packet?
Correct.
Okay.
Just every property owner that is within the boundary of the LID, should council choose to form it, gets notification.
Gotcha.
Just wanted to make sure I understood that. Nobody within the LID, nobody outside of the LID will get notification because they are no longer in the LID boundary.
Councilman Serrano.
Thanks. I'm for option B. No sense in just jumping around to it. So certainly, given our last action, those people are going to be annexed into my district. And I heard from the overwhelming majority of you, either via email or telephone or however, strong opposition. So I see really no reason to provide you with the product. You don't want to charge you with it. I recognize as Councilman Maloney, I guess my words would be kind of do so at your own risk, recognizing that costs will escalate over time, but that's a business case decision that you're to make. I know I've met with several of you that are recently built. And so a brand-new sewer that's got a 20- to 40-year shelf life, or excuse me, septic system, you don't have the need for sewer. I understand that. So to Councilman or to Mayor Pretam's point, why charge you for a product you don't need today?
Okay. Any further questions or comments, Councilman Mill?
Yeah, I also just want to piggyback on Serrano. From the comments last week, I also don't want to force people into something that they don't want, they don't want to buy. Seems like sometimes the federal government does that as well. But anyway, I just believe that seeing all these people out here, it's not normal to see this many people. So I'm sure you guys are probably all know, so my, would be a resounding for option B as well. So just want to save you guys some time, but it looks like we have a majority, almost anyway.
Okay. And just before I open the hearing, I do want to let everyone know, please use the opportunity, when the hearing is open, to say your comments. Once we close a hearing, you would need to speak with us after, speak with our city attorney preferably, but please use the time during the hearing. With no further comments from our council members, I will now open the hearing and invite anyone that has signed up to make comments, to come step forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joseph Christ. I am the owner of 7001, Road 71 North. It's this little red parcel right here. I think a lot of us can probably say that we're also in favor of B. I myself am opposed to the original and to option A, but I am amicable towards revision B. But there's something that I wanted to bring up this evening that I think a lot of us probably are thinking. And that is that basically, I feel it's important to put in perspective the reality of the communication or lack thereof that has happened between the city and the landowners in this area. At the April 25th meeting, the Public Works Director and staff said upwards of about six times that landowners were being reached out to and consulted with regarding fee structure and desired sewer plan and things like that. Mr. Withers even said, and I do quote, "We have heard from as many people as we can." Well, I am a property owner in that yellow area that he mentioned many times, and I was never contacted. I never received any mail or information. I did not receive that certified letter. And I recognize that I do not live on that piece of property, but my name and my address are tied to that, so I don't see why that was too difficult. I wasn't informed of this LID until April 29th, so about three, three and a half weeks ago. And that was only because of a neighbor reaching out to me to tell us what they had heard. I will also add that I never received, yeah, that certified mail. My situation isn't unique. From my understanding and conversations with others, most people in that area didn't find out until April 29th or even later of this LID. Again, only due to other neighbors telling their neighbors. I'll also note that April 29th was the last, was the day after that fourth and final workshop. In listening to the previous recordings, we learned that this workshop was the only one made available in evening hours for those who work a daytime job, which I assume is a number of us, myself included. I bring up this concern because after watching the April 25th and May 16th, and also the May 2nd and as many as we could in the last three weeks, I feel there was a significant disconnect between the actual and perceived outreach and communication with the landowners. I kind of want to jump into that idea of that 60%, that is the perceived value. That is not actually headcount. So, one person, if they owned most of that land, they would be the majority. And so my question really is, who was reached out to? Who came to those workshops? Who was interacted with? Because it wasn't me, and it wasn't everyone that lives in that area that I'm aware of. And talking with a few of the landowners who did receive some form of communication early on, there did not appear to be any actual conveyance of cost structure or financial impact this would have on them. I myself am on the line for $20,000. I know some people were on the line for 40, 50, 100, $170,000. And these are people who live on a home out there. They're not planning on developing anytime soon. Further, I've not been able to find any documentation or records of those neighborhood meetings or workshops to determine, yeah, which landowners or what was discussed, what was processed through these things. And it's concerning to me that between the April 25th council meeting and the May 16th council meeting, so the one, you know, a week ago, the consensus went from strong dialogue between landowners and the city planners to being probably one of the fullest city councils you've had in a long time. And that concerns me. That does concern me. This has been discouraging and frightening. We only discovered this because of the due diligence of a neighbor. Once again, I personally never received any correspondence. Since then, we have been scrambling for the last three weeks to prepare for this meeting and inform as many people as we could that lived in this area of what was happening. And so I do have questions, like what did the outreach actually look like? Why weren't more detailed printouts and plans provided to every homestead that was out there? And how were landowners with undeveloped land contacted, like myself? I do respectfully ask that the council look into these things related to miscommunication and how this happened. I additionally ask that you do read our written statements that we had submitted to gain a better understanding of all our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? So there's a lady here in the front?
The button. My name's Todd Blackman. I live at 7428 Deseret Drive. Uh, my name's Todd Blackman. I live at seventy-four twenty-eight Deseret Drive. And, um, I've been trying to pay attention. There's a lot going on. And, uh, I'm still struggling to understand exactly how this would affect me. But I do have a piece of paper that says I would be assessed a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars on my two and a half acre spot. Now, if that assessment went through, this body would, would effectively be erasing eight years of equity that I've built into my home for a sewer system I don't need.
I'm gonna invite the audience to please remain quiet while, uh, the gentleman speaks. Thank you.
So, uh, my home's been on Deseret for forty-seven years. You know, I'm doing fine. I appreciate the opportunity, but I'd like to decline. Don't need it, don't want it. Uh, I attended a meeting, you know, and, uh, again, um, it, it was hard to get down to the, to the real nuts and bolts of how this would affect us, you know, homeowners. We're not investors with large plots of land. We're just homeowners. And we're existing in a very difficult economic time. Inflation, like we've not seen it for some time, and no end in sight. So financially, I'm very concerned about how this would affect me. Uh, we were told in the, in the meeting that I attended, uh, that our costs would be about a hundred dollars a month, right? Personally, I doubt this very much. Uh, and I was also offended that that number was passed off like it was nothing. And I know that some people in this neighborhood, that's a hundred dollars a month extra is a lot. Now, just doing rough math myself, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, um, that's not a hundred dollars a month. Not unless we're talking about a hundred-year term and no interest. All right? So, my worry here is that, you know, if I, and especially seeing the way, this is not one, one landlord or one vote. This is, the guy across the street from me has a lot of votes. Maybe all that's needed. If we talk about assessed value, is his land ownership more valuable, more important than mine? This is my home. That's a farm. That's an investment. And I should not, my, I'm working two jobs now and looking at third, okay? Just to get by. I don't see why, their business plan for development, and I understand the need for development. I don't disagree with it. But in the past, developers have paved their own way. They haven't build their neighbors that were there previously across the street. And, and that's the way I see this playing out. It's, it's dangerous. We live in a republic. A raw democracy says fifty-one percent of my neighbors can vote to take anything I own. That's not right. You know, that should never happen in America. A person should not be forced out of their home because of that development around them. And, you know, it's frustrating when I look back over the eight years, all the things I've done to my property. I've tried to make all these smart decisions with my money, and this seems to be completely out of my control.
Sir, if you'd like to point out your property on the map up there?
Where did that question come from?
Right here.
Sorry, here, I can't tell.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, anyway, uh, you know, country farmland, raw undeveloped land, they need, uh, they need sewer systems, you know, we don't. We're, we're already, we already have what we need. So if they want it, more power to them, build it, but don't ask me to pay for it. I can't afford it. If I could, you know, it might be a different situation. But right now, I'm looking at, can I afford my mortgage on top of what I estimate would be five hundred dollars a month? As much as five hundred dollars a month. That's zero interest, thirty years, all right? Can I afford that on top of my mortgage and stay in my home? Or can I flee quickly enough to try cities with enough assets intact to start again somewhere else? At sixty years old, people, I don't wanna start over again. You know, I've, uh, I've invested my whole adult life in this community. I was a volunteer firefighter for fifteen years, and it was almost the end of me twice. I've sacrificed enough. And I'm not unwilling to contribute. I am. But, uh, the way this is laid out to me and the way I understand it, it's, it's just not right. And I hope you all, um, opt for, uh, option B. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Now, please step forward.
So I push this button right here?
It's already gone.
Right here? Oh, it's right, okay. My name is Emma Katz, and I live in the seventy seventeen Road, uh, seventy-six. I've been living there for, uh, twelve years, and we didn't get any notification of anything of this. And we're gonna have to pay a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. We retire. And they're gonna make us pay six hundred dollars extra on that. We can't afford it. Are we gonna make everybody homeless here? I mean, a hundred and thirty, thirty-one thousand dollars, isn't that a lot? You know, we're not, we can't afford it. That's all my comment, you know? I mean, 'cause I don't, we didn't get any notification or anything, you know?
Ma'am, can you show us where you are on the map? Are you in that grayed out, red out area?
Can you come around to the front, please? Ma'am?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? I have a gentleman here in the black, and you're next.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lupi Cordinas. I live in twenty-six sixty Frontier Road. On behalf of my dad, which is seven oh oh five Row sixty-eight, that's what I'm here to talk about. I'm gonna have to second all the comments that were made from everybody here. Not- notifications were not done very well. They like to be excluded out of this. They have a couple lots. My parents are eighty but, year, eighty years old. They cannot afford this. One lot's be a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, at least from the information I gathered from Mr. Brendan he sent me. And one lot will be twenty thousand dollars. I'm not sure why we need, they need this, and I can see that Dairy Gold, why am I, they're helping all this line to go to Dairy Gold, but I'm not sure why you guys see it. I didn't see all this information. The information they give to all the people in their store, I mean, I have one letter that was sent to my mom that I get to read it for them. The meetings over there, some got canceled, whatever, it wasn't, it was not a timely, it was during the day, one that couldn't make it. So I'm here in behalf of them. They don't want it. So, well, all your comments, I see what you do, guys do, having to listen to everything, but they are on social security, retired. They can't afford to. Now, do I wish they have a parcel of land? When they get to a point that they're not gonna be able to take care of that, they'll sell the land, and hopefully that will pay for their care. So that's coming from their son, okay? And then I'll have to donate some of that, because the federal government is not gonna do it. So, and that's not how it's done in Mexico. You gotta take care of them, so, okay? Thank you very much.
Sir, if you have that letter from your parents, do you have that with you?
Yes, I do.
You wanna give it to the clerk? Right over there.
What do you want to do?
If you, do you want to turn that in?
No, I don't have the letter. I have a, I received a letter that, that notification. But my point is, was I guess if I do need to write a letter to you guys to exclude this thing, uh, which is, that's what I hear the comments, I will do that, uh, because we don't want that.
No need. Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you for your comments. Sir, if you'd like to step forward?
My name is Jeff Lotto. I live at seventy-two sixteen Deseret Drive. I don't know what the city council has been told, not, wasn't privy to that. I don't know what most of these people actually know about this LID that is being proposed. I would actually like somebody to stand up and actually propose what they're, explain what they're actually asking. Because in my last meeting, we were given all sorts of information with no actual facts behind it. No calculations for your stats, nothing. All of these people here that have been issued notices of how much this is gonna cost them? Hundred thousand dollars. Me, myself, I believe it's around, around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over the next twenty years. And we were told that this is gonna improve our property value. Okay? I would like to know how you, how your planners determine this. Especially in the fact, there's not a single sewer service on this line. The line at Deseret Drive and Cow Trail is going to be approximately twenty-five foot deep. In order to dig that depth in that terrain, you're gonna be approximately forty to fifty foot at the top of the trench. You are not going to be able to just tie into this in the future. Oh, by the way, the city won't allow you to tie into this main later on. Any depth over sixteen foot is required to have a ductile iron fitting tee there. That cannot be done after the fact. Now, if you look at the distance from that sewer main, going back to Cow Trail Drive, that's thirteen hundred and twenty feet, minimum twelve foot deep for a sewer service for one resident. We can do some simple comic book math at forty dollars a foot or better. Can you afford that to get a sewer service forced on you to get sewer service? Oh, and just by the way, when this was brought up to a city representant, representative at the last meeting, one of my neighbors said, "I can't afford to go thirteen hundred and thirty feet at forty dollars a foot." It was actually suggested that maybe they need to sell and move. Really? These are our city representatives, and that's their best answer? I really hope that the city council will ask for some actual answers. Because we're not getting them. We were told one thing at the meeting, phone calls afterwards totally opposed what we were told. And then we're told, well, it was a miscommunication. Miscommunication or flat-out lie? I don't know. Haven't gotten any straight answers, haven't got any cost analysis, haven't got any facts behind anything that we're being pushed on. I've been in that property for twenty-five years. All of this, on top of the fact, to where we're talking about property and you're annexing stuff that, like I said before, is in litigation. If that appeal was upheld, this all goes back to Agland. Is what we're doing even legal here? These are the questions I, I would like some answers to. As you can see, we have a lot of people here that just would like some answers to questions that aren't being answered. So, I hope the city council will take the time, look into the questions, look into the problems, and understand that we don't believe we need to pay for the farmland owners and the developers, and they're gonna profit from this out of our pocket. We can't afford it. We don't want it. And we need an advocate. We need somebody that's gonna look at everything and look at us on our behalf. Because we don't know who to contact. We need an advocate, and hopefully that will be you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any further comment on this topic? And I will ask, because we're running a little late here, I will ask to, if you're gonna bring new topics, new subjects, I appreciate all the information. I know you, you're very passionate about your properties, but please try to be brief.
So that I'm clear and understand, two people can't talk on the same subject?
No, sorry, I did not say that, just.
Okay, that was my understanding.
Try to be brief on your.
So the intentional incitement of frustration, to me, is very disappointing for Mr. Lotto. I don't think that's necessary nor helpful. I've watched this process from the beginning, and I'm impressed by Ms. Sierra's ability to do the public outreach process. It was given notice. I looked it up and found it and, uh, have watched this process closely. It's, I can see the reasoning behind the comments that some of you council have made of why that you would choose decision B. Looking at some of the history of the donut hole and the frustration that it has caused to landowners and to property owners and to the city, I think it will be unfortunate to draw another donut hole into the city of Pasco. And, uh, so I think, think carefully on that. I can see the reason why that some of these properties that will be assessed more than a hundred thousand dollars, how that that's difficult. And I think that there may be a way to, to figure out how not to do that, because I do see that that is unnecessarily burdensome on individual property owners and the, their liking to, their rural lifestyle. And, uh, I think that, I think that there's a way that that could be figured out, and I don't know what it is as a developer. I don't know how to answer that. But I think that, uh, Ms. Sierra's process, along with the consultant that's doing this, has been doing a very fine job and working well. This project, if you remember, started out about thirty-five million dollars. And with consistent, um, public outreach and, uh, for public processes and the city staff's willingness to work with the private sector, that number has come down more than ten million dollars, and I think that's very helpful. I'm thankful that that process has taken place. Um, I don't envy you in, in the decisions that you need to make tonight. And, uh, I can appreciate the people that are here in concern for their community. And, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Counsel, my name is Stephen Tate. My home is, uh, seventy twenty-five Road seventy-one North. I'm one of these ghost lots that, I have a house there, it just doesn't show up. Just bear in mind that we've, there's been some development in that area since that picture was taken. Uh, thank you for allowing us to speak. I would echo my concern over the communication provided for the LID. I found out like most from a neighbor. Uh, I was apparently one of the few that knew about it before the fourth and final meeting, so I, I made it to that meeting. After the meeting, um, we went door to door, uh, to show people the paperwork from the city, and most were either unaware or did not understand the financial implications of the proposal. Certified letters did show up at some, at some homes, but after the final workshop had already occurred. I would like to address a few statements made on May sixteenth to address Mr. Serrano's concern about, uh, septic's failing and us having to pay, you know, down the road. Um, modern septic systems are actually not, you know, are not one and done. They can be repaired, refurbished, replaced. We have preserved drain fields. Um, and, uh, due to the good soil we have there or the sand, uh, we can actually maintain those septic systems pretty much in perpetuity. Uh, and for reference, the homes between Cow Trail and Deseret could replace their septic systems five times over for the average charge of the LID. I know because I just put my septic system in last year. To address Mr. Maloney's concerns, you suggested that a lot of the land is undeveloped, uh, again, because you saw on the map. But the map, like I said, has five lots that have been developed since. So there's, there is development there, and there will be development there even without the, uh, LID. Uh, I too can appreciate planning twenty to thirty years out. However, accounting for the massive amount of land being annexed by Pasco, our small pocket doesn't, a small pocket like ours that doesn't perfectly conform to the cookie cutter will do little to stop Pas- A small pocket like ours that doesn't perfectly conform to the cookie cutter will do little to stop Pasco from reaching its potential. If you include the West UGA, we account for a mere two point six percent of the total UGA land. So I, I fail to see how that will impact uh, Pasco's development. Um, I think uh, we can both live in harmony, so to speak. Um, and most of that land is completely undeveloped, so you can have whatever aspirations you want and the landowners want, you guys can. Make it happen with all that land because there's no one to step on. Um, everyone's cooperating, it's great. Uh, in thirty, uh, I would ask the council to save the four million dollars now and exclude our small seventy-five acre portion of the LID. Uh, in thirty years, even without sewer, undeveloped land could be developed even without sewer, two half acre lots or one acre lots. Um, and you know, we can still have a decent amount of housing in that area, like many other parts of Pasco without sewer. Uh, council, please take into consideration our properties, our meeting, the needs of the community now and including us in. In the LID places a large financial burden on our community, uh, as many of others uh, have said, this will impact us and our children twenty, thirty, forty years out, so long-term planning. Uh, this charge, the charges for this is are so massive that it's going to basically ruin people's financial lives. Um, so uh, for one to five acre households, our average LID cost is still over forty thousand dollars. So choosing alternative A would be punching thirty households in the financial gut right after enduring COVID while heading into a recession. Allow the fixed income in our community to keep their homes which they have lived in for decades. Allow the rest of us to use our resources to provide for the future of our community in a different way. Let us send our children to college, buy electric cars, install solar, please choose alternative B.
Thank you for that. Any. Any further questions or comments? Actually comments.
Excuse me, yeah, my name is Chris McClure, uh, I've got the parcel. Right here. And it's all three of those. And then also I have roughly twenty acres, twenty-five acres on the other side of Cow Trail. Uh, I really don't like the annexation, I've been out there since seventy-three. So as far as Mr. Maloney goes. We've been there a little bit longer than you have. And donut holes and property rights need to stay with us. Uh, like Mr. Mars, he doesn't want to be part of the annexation.
So we're talking about the.
I realize, I realize that and this is part of another annexation. We don't want to be part of it. And I think Jeff. Lot- uh, Lotto there is gave you a pretty good argument on what's going on. A lot of things haven't been said and they, and they should have been. I guess that's about it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Hi, I'm Charlie Tate and I live. I'm going to keep this short because most of my stuff is what other people said. I'm a single mother, low income household of four. And it would be very hard to fulfill the burden of alternative A. Moving is not really an option. As COVID and current economics. Offer unlimited lower income housing options as a whole, pretty much in our whole state. And I know that other families in our community are in similar situations and that's everything.
Thank you. And any further comments other than the gentleman in blue?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Shen Gully, I reside at seven zero two one Cow Trail. I just kind of want to point out the obvious here. We've made mention of there being a majority wanting this. But. I want to be really specific, it's the majority of the people who own the land. I'm glad that they can own such a large plot, I got a little small one. I work full-time and have been a first responder as an EMT, as a deputy, and as a first responder for mental health. My little plot. Is going to cost me over forty thousand. Anybody want to raise their hand on how much a first responder makes? Right off the top of your head. Now you want to add mental health into that, come on. Anybody got a clue? Not even. Drop it down about fourteen. And that's because I'm actually one of the few people desired in my field around here. So yeah. Put in the LID, make us all homeless, is that so Dairy Gold can have a little bit more land to develop? And if I seem a little irate, it might be because you just took away my land and voted to do so by majority. Think about that very, very carefully, if somebody came in and decided to overstep their bounds on your land. And determine what you can do with it. Thank you.
Excuse me, ju- just a quick clarifying point, um, that Cow Trail development that we're talking here was not annexed in tonight. That was excluded from the annexation we just did, so if that, if you. Okay?
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, my name is Paul Allen, um, I live at seven zero two four, Road seventy-one North. Um, and I just wanted to come and and add my voice to the chorus of people in support of option B. Um, want to touch briefly on one topic that came up on the April twenty-eighth information night. Uh, those of us who attended were assured multiple times that our property value would increase by at least as much as each landowner would be charged for the LID. Um, but I talked to realtors. Um, and got a letter from one that you're welcome to look at if you cared to, um, and it's that explained that there really is no significant change in fair market value. Of an existing home by having the presence of a sewer line nearby. Um. And in the event that the value did increase, that really only benefits an investor who's planning to sell. And and it actually in turn hurts a resident who wants to enjoy their home and raise their family because it increases taxes. So at the, at the last city council meeting, there was some discussion about creating more donut holes and and even tonight as well. Um, and that it could further hinder the city growth. Um, but you also talked about a city council's responsibility to consider the needs of the whole, whole city and the future growth, which I understand. Um, and it's not just based on certain individual landowners. Um, however, the council. If the council were to say that Cow Trail has to be included in the LID for the greater good of the whole city and its future growth, it seems really backwards to. To in turn then place the financial burden of that decision on a very few number of landowners. So the LID undoubtedly makes sense for large developments and big areas where investors, um. Since they don't have other options for utilities and they can easily cover the costs out of their profits. But I hope you consider the voice of the upstanding residents of this area who first can't see a practical need or benefit from it. And secondly, can't see a way to fit it into the um, into their already strained finances. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Sir, if you're comfortable. If you're comfortable entering that into the record, that letter from your realtor, um. Go ahead and.
If you'd like to go ahead and hand it over to the clerk, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else with comments? Go ahead, sir.
My name is Nathan Hawes, I recently purchased the house on seventy-six twenty-four Desert Drive. I have a small growing family, I grew up on a farm. Uh, a good portion of what me and my wife decided to buy this property was, it was in the county. And we do plan to have animals and we have a septic system that has just been replaced. So I have no real reason to go into the sewer.
Welcome to the webinar, you have entered as an organizer and may now speak to any other organizers or panelists on the line. When you are ready to begin the presentation, press the start broadcast.
Uh, my property has been listed to pay seventy or fifty-seven thousand and have an acre and then in the assessment, there was another property that had an acre. Same as mine, that was only listed fifteen thousand dollars or seventeen or something like that. And if this goes through. Like a lot of people have said before, they can't afford it. We don't like the idea of being forced to pay for something we don't need. And also the fact that if this goes through, where we are responsible for this, even if we sell our homes and we don't get out of it. Get out of our homes in time. We have a pretty much a lien placed upon our property that this has to be paid. And like I said before, that the property value would increase. And it really doesn't. And so a lot of the equity that has been placed in it right now, I don't have any equity. Even though I've been trying to do some renovations to the house to build some equity. That would be at a loss for that, even if I did move or have the option to move, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Ma'am, if you have any new comments, go ahead and step forward.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lotto. Sorry, I live right there at seventy-two sixteen Desiree. I've asked questions, I can't get financial statements on like the total cost because. I've been told it's all preliminary and I understand being preliminary drawings and such. I can't get. How much it's really going to cost me in the end because the numbers keep changing. I also can't even get an interest rate of what you guys are going to charge us as an interest rate for twenty years. My house just appraised for a little over four hundred thousand. My flow charge is a hundred and eight, now it's down to eighty-eight thousand. If I sell my house with the LID, that comes off the top of my house profit. That comes off of everybody. There's four people on my road that are disabled and on. Incomes that they can't afford it either. One guy is out of town, the birth of a grandchild. The other gentleman is at home with his wife that's bedridden, they can't afford it. Neither can everybody else that showed up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, um, if I could interrupt. We are having some technological issues, so we will just need a moment to.
Sure.
Uh, fix that, thank you.
Thank you. John, do you need a five minute break maybe?
The broadcast is now starting, all attendees are in listen only mode.
It should be working now.
We're going to take a five minute break. Okay, so. Well, we'll continue with the public comment. We'll continue. We'll continue with the public comment and uh, as soon as we're done with the hearing, we'll take a little break. Um, so. Is there anyone else that wishes to add comment to the LID hearing? Second call. For comments for the LID hearing.
Can I say like thirty more seconds?
Go ahead, sir.
Um, Stephen Tate again, I just wanted to let council know, we actually have over seventy percent of the uh, proposed improvement values already signed as no. Um, so that, and if you refer to, I think, page seventy-six of your packets, you will see that that clinches our exclusion from A. So please ju- just choose B and save us all the time of having to do the, jump through the hoops.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Third and final call for comments. Hearing, no further comments, this hearing is now closed. Thank you. Counsel, is there any further questions to staff? Councilman Campos.
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor, I don't have anything specifically for staff, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and making public comment, whether you agree or disagree. Your voice needs to be heard, Mr. Lotto, thank you for coming out, I I don't necessarily agree with Mr. Baumann, I think you're entitled to feel how you feel. And the facts that you presented off, whether they're true or not, that's not inconsequential to me, it's nice to hear that, I need feedback from the community and I think everybody else up here agrees. It's, it's always good to hear what's going on out there because we're not privy to everything that's out there. I know Mrs. Sarah's amazing at what she does, I know Steve Worley is also really talented at what he does, but again, if there's room for improvement, um, we're going to keep an eye here out for that stuff, so. Um, again, thanks for everybody coming out, we, we do appreciate it and again, seventy percent's pretty telling, thank you.
Thank you, I do want to second that, I did take lengthy notes of everyone. Uh, do appreciate you taking the opportunity to come and express your, your thoughts, your feelings and using this time. To let us know again, uh, helping the city grow, helping the city be better and also helping the council uh, represent you properly. And uh, so again, thank you for coming, showing up today. And with that, um, with no further comment, do we have a motion?
Yes, um, Mayor Barajas, I just want to clarify, clarify, just make sure that again, um, apparently we had some miscommunications earlier as to what exactly was being annexed, so I want to be extraordinarily and excruciatingly clear on ma- on what we're, uh, what I'm, what motion I'm going to make right now. Um, um, so option B, um, I'm looking to staff for make, make sure I have clarification on this, option, option B. Um, would remove the property owners here that we're discussing that are primarily in red, that entire section here that is not in green, um, is Sarah, is that correct?
That is correct and I will advance to that picture, so you have. A clear picture of what it is. Uh, this is the closed in view.
Alright, great, appreciate that, alright, this is a lengthy motion, so just bear with me, um. I move to adopt ordinance number four five nine two relating to improvements for a, for a new sanitary sewer main, lift station and other sewer improvements in the. Uh, city's east urban growth area expansion, collectively the improvements. Ordering the improvements of full sanitary sewer construction consistent with city council resolution number four one seven four. Establishing local improvement district number one five two and ordering the carrying out of the proposed improvements. Providing that payment for the improvements being made by special assessments upon the property in the district payable by the mode of payment by bonds. And providing uh, for the issuance and sale of local improvement district warrants redeemable in cash or other short-term financing and. Local im- uh, improvement district bonds for option B as presented and further authorized publication by summary only.
I have a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman uh, Melon and do we need a roll call vote?
Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Serrano.
Yes.
Campos.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Melon.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
And Barajas.
Yes. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, and with that, we're going to take a five minute break to return at uh, nine. Eight fifty, correct, my goodness, eight fifty-five. Okay. Thank you, everyone that attended this special meeting, we're now going to continue into our regular workshop. So we will actually continue with our special meeting, we have one last item that was hiding in the agenda. Um, two items, two items on the agenda still. Uh, for those of you that do not wish to stick around for the rest of the agenda, you're more than welcome to, to leave, I will not be offended. So item A, uh, item five A, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. The resolution one Washington momentum of understanding with Washington State municipalities and we have uh, Mr. Ferguson for that.
Great, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, so yeah, this is the formal agreement, uh, uh, that council has the option to have. Um, the city of Pasco join as what we refer to as a participating jurisdiction. Uh, with regard to uh, the uh, what was referred to generally as the one Washington MOU, which. Uh, essentially is the opportunity for the city of Pasco to join as a participating jurisdiction and agree to the allocations. Uh, of any particular settlement with regard to uh, this particular litigation now. Um, it is extremely complex, there's uh, multiple uh, litigants, defendants. Uh, this uh, this agreement really focuses on three uh, of the uh, the folks related to the opioid crisis, uh, who are part of that litigation. Uh, it is a binding agreement, but it is a little bit of an odd situation in that normally, uh, if there was some kind of settlement agreement that came before council, it would be because council is a party. Uh, to litigation, uh, the ca- council or the city is not actually a, a party, but uh, would become a, a participating jurisdiction. So, um, at this point, um, it really is kind of a, a nuanced document, but I do want to be clear that it uh, that it would. uh, that it would, the, the city would be agreeing to a specific allocation, um, a percentage amount as well as then also, um, be required to use that, those funds, uh, in a particular way. Um, so, um, that's what we're here for, is to, uh, see if council would like to, uh, join that and become a particip- uh, participating jurisdiction in this particular, um, litigation. And when a final binding settlement is reached, uh, that's when this, uh, would be binding on the city.
Thank you for that, Mr. Ferguson. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Councilman Serrano.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Ferguson, if I'm reading correctly, uh, it looks like on pages six and seven, it's sub, item sub-J of, I don't know what number. Um, it has specific responsibilities. Is that a limitation of what this money can be allocated for once received by the city? Or can we exceed the scope of this? Because I see, uh, I mean, I just, I'm trying to read through it real quick since we got this on the fly, uh, making sure that it really benefits our community. It's not just money that goes and we're dashboarding something. We got enough metrics, uh, let's do something with this money.
That, uh, that's my understanding. I, uh, uh, as a, as a good leader, I delegated this to, uh, one of our associates to, to go through, uh, uh, word by word, and my understanding is exactly what you just referred to, which is, uh, the, 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 the funds are specifically, uh, related to, it's, it's very, uh, it, it seems to be a very complex system for if you, uh, use the funds in a, in a way that, that doesn't, uh, that isn't outlined in the agreement. You, there's, it looks like there's a way that you can try to use these funds, but it, it also makes it abundantly clear that, uh, it's recommended that you use the funds for these programs for outreach and, uh, a lot of the, the items that you mentioned in, uh, section J. So, um, while it sounds like there is some appeals process for how you can use those funds in other ways, uh, I, I wouldn't suggest that that would be a good, um, uh, reason to, to enter the agreement if, uh, if you're not okay with, uh, how they're asking you to, uh, utilize the funds throughout the community.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Um, then again, trying to read this kind of on the fly. Uh, I, I don't know whether or not this benefits our community. And I recognize that a global settlement brought by other plaintiffs benefits us in a financial. We don't have the risk of litigation, the costs associated with the same. Um, but if we believe our community has a special impact and it's out, not, not outlined, I'd be concerned or leery of signing this. Uh, again, even recognizing the savings of litigation. So, I'll leave it at that. I guess I'm kind of indifferent without knowing what the real impact is to Pasco.
So I do have a question. Oh, go ahead, uh, Mayor Portem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you, Mr. Ferguson, for this. So, my understanding is that, um, exhibits, that we have some exhibits in here that talk about the strategies that can be used and where the funding can go, and they're, they're pretty broad in terms of treatment, um, prevention, things like that. There's a, there's a number of, of different avenues that sound like they're very much in alignment with the conversations we've had about mental health and substance abuse within the community. So it doesn't look like this restricts us in a meaningful way in that fashion. Um, in terms of special impact, um, if I'm understanding correctly, um, having read this, was that this, the, the formula and allocation is already taking into account the impact various communities have had, um, um, because of the, um, the opioid, um, you know, um, epidemic, crisis, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, so, so in, in many ways, the final settlement will be based off of those real impacts that we, that, uh, or do we have a role in showing those impacts and helping tell the story as to why Pasco in specific is, is specif- is, is impacted by this crisis?
Yeah, so, uh, what they did was, uh, the Keller-Rorabrick is the, uh, law firm, uh, that is leading this litigation for, uh, the Washington State Local Government. And so, uh, what they did was, uh, they went through some statistical analysis, and you'll see in, on page three, number three, where it talks about, uh, uh, the allocation model uses three equally weighted factors. One, uh, the amount of opioid shipped to the county. Uh, two, the number of opioid deaths that occurred in the county, and three, the number of people who suffered opioid use disorder in the county. And those are all, uh, uh, those have to be kind of clarified in the sense that those are all the ones that we know, uh, or, or that data has been able to reveal. So, that really starts, uh, the, the process, uh, on a county-by-county basis, and then from there, it goes, uh, based on, uh, population. As I understand it, it really focuses on what the local jurisdictions' percentage of the county is. So that's how they get a factor, and then you'll look back, uh, maybe, I think it's exhibit B, where it goes into each county and, uh, uh, how those have been divided out. Uh, the cities, uh, or towns, uh, that are under ten thousand are not specifically called out, and that those monies, uh, can, uh, those will go to the county for, for each one. Like you'll notice, you'll ponder Ray County, you know, all the money goes to the county. Uh, whereas Pierce County obviously has, uh, multiple jurisdictions that will receive, uh, specific funds. Uh, and then, uh, so if you go to ours, Franklin, should be a couple of pages over here, I think, page, uh, one-ninety-three of your packet. Uh, Franklin County, and then Pasco is obviously the only city that would receive a direct allocation, so, um, but otherwise, uh, the, the remaining portion goes, stays with the county.
Okay, great. So this already accounts for the sort of impact we've seen as a city, at least that we can prove. That's already been determined, um, because of a variety of information that's been pulled together to date. Um, and then, um, the exact settlement of what that will be presented, percentage of will be determined later if we sign into this agreement, if we, sorry.
No, no, the percentage won't change, uh, the, the actual, the dollar amount. Yep, that's correct.
Great. So, um, yeah, I, um, I can't imagine us pursuing a legal action against a, um, um, opioid, um, company. Um, at this time, I don't, obviously I'll reserve any specific comments to the appropriate, uh, form of venue for that, but this seems to be a, a reasonable approach. It seems to have already taken into account a lot of the, the concerns that I would have as into how the money, how the allocations are looked at being, uh, distributed. So, I guess, uh, um, Mr. Ferguson, I, I think it's in front of us because you're recommending that we look at approving this from your legal perspective?
Well, I think, uh, well, definitely, uh, in terms of if, if the question is, uh, legal risk, uh, you know, you know, times are divided by how, or the, the amount of, uh, cost of pursuing that. Um, Steve's looking at me like I'm crazy because I can't do math, but, uh, um, the, at the end of the day, it's really one of those things of, uh, this has the lowest, uh, risk associated with, because obviously it's, uh, it's a guaranteed, uh, um, payment. Uh, and it also has no litigation risk, uh, with regard to, um, having to pay, uh, to pursue that. So, um, from that perspective, uh, I would definitely recommend it, but at the same time, as Mr. Serrano, uh, aptly points out, it's really a policy decision to determine whether, uh, the city feels this is a fair, um, I guess, uh, compensation for, uh, the, what, if, if they believe that they've been unfairly targeted by the, the manufacturers.
Great, alright, I appreciate that. Um, I think I'll be supporting this this evening based on, on those facts and data. I just don't, I just, I'm trying to imagine us going down the process in the middle of everything else we're doing to try to, um, eh, to try to, to carve out additional money in something that's already been agreed to, and I just, I can't see it happening, so I'll, I'll, I'll be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Any further questions? Go ahead, Councilman Serrano.
I'll just say thank you, uh, to Mr. Maloney. I, I hadn't gotten through that appendix, which lays out a very comprehensive opportunities, um, several different, um, I don't want to say industries, but different sectors could be involved. So, having seen that, uh, my concerns are certainly pretty moot at this point, so, uh, I too am supportive of this.
Mr. Ferguson, just a quick question. I saw that the accountable communities of health in this region is, who will be managing the allocation?
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, what page are you on now?
Uh, page three, item sixteen.
And you're referring to, uh, the, the list of folks that would be managing it, the allocation regions?
Basically, who's managing the?
That's correct, yeah. So they're trying to group folks together so that, uh, they can have some regions that would then, uh, these folks would be able to then focus on.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barajas, I'd like to make a motion. Um, I move to approve resolution number four-one-eight-eight, approving the one Washington men- memorandum of understanding between Washington State municipalities, and further authorize the city manager to execute the MOU.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Mayor Portem Maloney, seconded by Councilman Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. With that, we move on to item five B, resolution amendment to the emergency personal services agreement with Benton Franklin Humane Society for animal control services, and we don't have Director Ratkai here. Recha, Director Sigdell.
Uh, yes, Mr. Ratkai is absent today, but, um, Mr. Ferguson will be filling in for him.
Thank you.
Like a great leader. Exactly. So, uh, so this is just, uh, really more of a housekeeping item, uh, that we need to do, uh, as we've, uh, spoken about, uh, several times. We've got, uh, an emergency services contract in place right now with Benton Franklin Humane Society. Uh, this, uh, that is set to expire on May thirty-first. Uh, and so this is, uh, an attempt to, uh, make sure that we don't have any kind of, uh, gap, uh, between, uh, our contracts. This would give us, uh, another forty-five days, uh, to negotiate a contract, uh, uh, moving forward. So, uh, with that, we would just recommend, uh, being able to pass this so that we can amend that contract to extend it till, uh, July fifteenth.
Any questions or comments from our council members?
I guess my comment would be that while, uh, I believe all of council received an email, uh, from city managers able about the, from the director of BFHS Humane Society about just meeting, you know, annual, uh, audits, financial audits, Better Business Bureau ratings, and so it doesn't seem like there's, there's not necessarily concern in that area for me, but just the, um, concerns that were brought up from the public at our last meeting about the quality of service and, uh, care that we were alerted to, and so, you know, while it's not about sort of the ethical component of how to manage money, it still is about capacity and bandwidth to handle calls and quality of animal care. And so, I, I don't know if the staff have looked at any other options or seen if there are any other, um, animal shelter, animal services, um, nonprofit, or otherwise in the area that we can contract with.
Thank you. Any further questions, uh, Councilman Melon?
Yeah, I did want to make a couple of comments. Um, I know it kind of goes into the other ones where we talked about what we did in the previous week, but, uh, it kind of all ties in. I did go down last week with Zach Ratkai, made an announced visit to the animal shelter. Um, I will say that the facility was very clean. I know the smell was there, but the smell was probably just because the building is so old. I mean, it was actually hard to breathe when we initially stepped in. Um, but all the times that I've been there, and then this time, I did find it to be the cleanest that I'd ever seen it. It was actually quite impressive of how clean it was. Um, I do know from different messages from other people, they made comments about outbuildings being locked. We actually did go through the whole facility, went through every room. Um, we did see sick cats, and with that in mind, I would actually, I know we've had Officer Lee, who is a phenomenal police officer. I know her quite well. And, um, I know she's just very on top of things. I know she makes surprise inspections as well. I would recommend maybe we get like a, an outside veterinarian to go through and check on the animals, just so it's not, you know, so we have that impartiality, so that moving forward, we don't have things happen where animals are mistreated, and then, uh, the city looks bad in, in that regard. So, that's my comments. Um, but I did want to say I was very impressed of the progress. I know we're moving along with the animal shelter. It is, the city's not delaying anything, and they are doing their best. Uh, we did have a good conversation, and I would also recommend any of the other council members to talk, reach out to Zach, Zach Ratkai, and he said he more than willing to take you guys down there unannounced to see for yourself how the, the progress is going and the condition of the animal shelters, so. Sorry for taking so long, but it, it was a very good, uh, experience concerning what had happened in the past.
Councilmember Melon, did you guys discuss at all the, the cost structure of, of, um, you know, uh, adoption, adopting a pet? Did that come up in your visit?
We did talk about that, um, because I found it a little discerning as far as the, the rates for certain animals versus other animals versus other animals. I remember before it was like one price for all animals, or, you know, dogs and cats. Um, he said he wanted to have better discussion about that with me at a later time. Um, at the moment, we were just actually to see the, how the facility looked, what was the care of the animals, but I know he said that was discerning. Um, both of that, we found it, uh, I don't really find that the best business practice. Obviously, I'm not running an animal shelter, but, uh, I don't know, I, I think that the prices, I was kind of shocked that they were that high. Kind of, to me, it limits some animals from getting adoptive when you're just trying to get a cat, and it's that kind of price. Um, but, uh, I would, I'd like to have more discussion with that at a later date.
I appreciate you going down there and giving us that information, um, because I think that price point was something difficult, and then also the, the lack of veterinarian care um, was another piece of it. And so, I don't know if that's something that we write into our, uh, an agreement, that we would like, uh, them to have enough capacity to have a veterinarian see animals at a certain frequency. Um, that's my, I think that's what I need to get there to support this.
That's what I was trying to say, but yeah, so thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman, uh, Mayor Portem Maloney.
Yeah, I'll be very brief. This is a forty-five-day extension to the existing agreement to make sure there's no lapses in services. Um, while we continue to negotiate the next one, I'd ask staff, what is our opportunity to have some say in what that agreement's being negotiated at? Um, obviously, there's a lot of community concerns and a lot of council concerns, and I want to make sure that we're not getting an agreement that we're going to then reject in forty-five days because, um, of these same lasting concerns. I want to make sure that we're ahead of it. So how, how can, how could I, um, provide input into whatever agreement's being negotiated?
Absolutely. This, uh, contract in front of you is a temporary one, so that we can start working on what a permanent measure would look like, and, uh, we can definitely come back in a workshop setting and discuss, um, those criteria that council would like to see, and the one that is being discussed as is today.
Great, thank you. I'll, I'll be supporting this because we can't lapse the service, um, just full stop. So I'll be supporting this one, and then, um, be very, watching very closely to see what comes next. Thank you.
Any further comments from council members? Seeing none, oh, Councilman Campos.
Just briefly pointing a clarification then. So Mayor Portem Maloney then would, when we make a motion, would you then also include language that said that you'd like to see contract discussion brought back to council workshop and its set date?
I, I, I intended to hold, um, um, Ms. Sigdell to her word.
I'm good for it.
Like a good leader.
With that, can I get a motion?
So I move to approve resolution number four-one-eight-nine, authorizing the city manager to execute amendment to the emergency personal services agreement with the Benton Franklin Humane Society for Animal Control and Sheltering Services to extend the agreement.
And there's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Council, uh, Mayor Portem Maloney, seconded by Councilman Campos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. And we are done with our special meeting this evening, and we will move on to our regular workshop meeting. And with housekeeping already done, if I can manage my agenda here, we will move on to item four, uh, for more reports from council members. Are there any reports from any council members, any meetings or events that you may have attended?
I will share, actually. We were going to move right through. I will share that, uh, today, I did have a tour of the Hanford bee reactor. So the very first tour of the mayor's, uh, we were out there, we, it was an all-day thing. Uh, but it was a great way to see what the, um, Hanford is actually doing out there, the progress, the changes, the past, and how we're moving forward. Um, I do highly recommend, uh, for people to jump on board on that tour. Um, I had more comments to share, but it is, uh, very late in the evening, so we're going to move right along into item five. Items for discussion, we have five A. We do have a presentation tonight by the domestic violence services of Benton and Franklin Counties. Um, do we have any introductory comments from Director Sigdell?
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor and council. We, uh, have with us, who's waited with us for a long time, uh, Angie Pacheco, uh, who is the executive director for the domestic violence services of Benton Franklin Counties. Um, and, um, she will be providing an update on, uh, services provided by the agency, uh, for domestic violence survivors within the tri-cities area. And she will be providing an update on services provided by the agency for domestic violence survivors within the Tri-Cities area.
Thank you. Ms. Angie, good to see you here. No, there you go.
Good evening, Mayor Barajas and council members. My name is Angie Pacheco. I'm the Executive Director of Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin Counties. We're honored to come here before you and present an opportunity and share possibilities to bring domestic violence services to the residents of the city of Pasco. Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin Counties, founded in two thousand and three, is the only domestic violence program in Benton and Franklin Counties. We have a twenty-four hour crisis line, an emergency shelter, and a wide range of services for youth and adults in English and Spanish to promote survivors and their families' safety and well-being. This is the first time we are reaching out to the city of Pasco to collaborate, in collaboration to bring services outside of Benton County. We enclosed a brochure in our, about our agencies in your packets. The mission of Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin Counties is to create a healthy, community free from all forms of domestic violence. Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin Counties envisions an inclusive community free from violence and oppression, where people are free to live and love as they choose. Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin County works for all people to have options and choices that improve their lives in the areas from housing, education, employment, by aiding in access to housing options, financial assistance to get safe housing, social services for basic needs, and safety planning that is culturally relevant in the language of clients. DVSPF helps them set a plan for future regardless of gender, race, ethnicity, age, or any other bias. In this way, Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin Counties addresses health, financial inequity, racism, and discrimination. The annual client served at three thousand, over fifty percent of Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin Counties are Hispanic, multiracial, people of color. Ninety percent are female. Ninety-five percent of the people served live at or below poverty levels. A person living in a domestic violence situation often finds themselves homeless with little or no income. Domestic violence affects all races, cultures, genders, and cuts across socioeconomic lines. Yet people living in poverty are twice as likely to experience domestic violence. People of color are statistically more likely to live in poverty. People of color and those in the LGBT population are two to three times more likely to experience domestic violence. Client safety is a priority along with social and emotional well-being by finding them shelter or helping them stay in their own home with a safety strategy. Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin Counties provides resources for housing, financial aid counseling, or basic needs services that are twenty-four seven, free of charge, confidential, and driven by the client. Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin County advocates help clients become safe and independent and provide case management for navigating beyond any barriers relating to immigration, language, socioeconomic position, religion, gender, or race. Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin Counties advocates help negate the historical prejudice that comes with being a domestic violence survivor, which increases if you are a marginalized population and includes a stigma of domestic violence. Being female, being a male, seeking help from domestic violence, living in poverty, immigration issues, being a person of color or LGBTQ, or lacking in education. Our strategic plan includes the following goals, open to collaboration with the city of Pasco. We would like to collaborate in an office site where we can meet with clients and provide services where it is safe and available for services, both in Spanish and English. The services would be for clients of domestic violence and students that are currently in our prevention programs in the Pasco Elementary, High School, and Junior High. We would seek funding from the Community Development Block Grant from the city of Pasco, state, as well as county funding. The possibility of a site where we can have a thrift store for job training, revenue for self-sustaining services, and items for families that are relocating from abusive homes to independent living. We would work with community and foundations for funding. A shelter for families to be housed for services after DV incidents. We currently have a shelter from the city of Richland, which houses up to eight families at a time. We would seek state and county funding. We would like to request single housing or multi-housing for families to move into from shelters so that they can develop independent living. We currently have a four-plex from the city of Kennewak that we administer. We would seek federal and state funding. We would request vacant land for the possibility of combining services all in one place, and we would seek from the city of Pasco vacant land, federal and county and state funding. Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin Counties is excited to continue the conversation with the city of Pasco. I would like to introduce Angel Montalongo, who will share a story of her perspective on domestic violence as a family of DV and its effects on the community. I also have two board members that are here that would like to speak on behalf of our services. Is there any questions for me?
Hello. My name is Angel Montalongo. I'm a family, me and my family are here tonight to show you a face to what domestic violence actually looks like. Our family was devastated when we lost our sister, Juanita Montalongo, to domestic violence on March third, two thousand and two. Juanita was a member of this community. She grew up here, went to school here, and she had her children here. She was funny, smart, and a great mother of two boys. Unfortunately, she could not escape her abusive relationship. When Juanita became involved with her abuser, there were no obvious red flags. As time went on, this slowly changed. She became more distant and isolated. Juanita tried to leave him multiple times, but every time, she went back out of fear for her two small boys. She also was scared for us, her family, because he always threatened to do harm to us. Eventually, this abuse escalated, and he ended up beating her to death. A beating that lasted hours in the presence of her youngest child. Even to this day, our family struggles, especially her two boys. Perhaps if there was more community resources or if she knew where to go, she could have left safely. We hope that this is a start of a partnership with Pasco, a community I grew up in and I care about. We can start saving more lives, help others into a safe one. It's our belief that as a community, we have the responsibility to help support any woman, child, or man that needs it. I thank you for listening to my story. I do want to leave you with this one quote I came across by Emily Marie Cheon, an award-winning author. Her quote inspires me to contribute to our community and change my grief into helping others. If you want to know where to find your contribution to the world, look at your wounds. When you learn how to heal them, teach others. Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. I appreciate you coming up and speaking on behalf of your sister. I remember her clearly, so thank you.
Hi, council members. I'm Jerry Cochrane, Pasco resident. I also serve on the Pasco Planning Commission, so thank you for your continued support there. I'm also a board member with Domestic Violence Services, and my story is actually with Richa. We were actually part of Leadership Tri-Cities Class Twenty-four, and we actually served for a class project at DVSPF. And one of the things that impressed on me is working in all the shelters, working the Kennewak shelters. We did some work at the Richland Shelter in particular, and just seeing and being involved and interacting with the children as well as the moms that were in that shelter, you could just see the children wanting a safe place. You could see the moms, just a safe place where that load was lifted off them. They were in a safe environment. And so for us, being involved in that class project was pretty impactful because we felt that really, the impact of what the value of these shelters will bring to the women and men and others that are in this situation. So thank you for your support. We're looking for lots of opportunities for partnering with Pasco.
Hello, my name is Amber Rodriguez. I am a board member of Domestic Violence Services. But I didn't start out that way. Many of you may have seen me on the news accidentally. I did spearhead the Tri-Cities Women's March, and through that event, years before COVID, volunteer as well, and we're always looking for different things that the community needs and different ways to serve. After COVID hit in two thousand and twenty, I went out with a community member, a fellow photographer friend, Scott Butner, and we went out and we were like, we don't know what we're gonna do with this if you wouldn't mind assisting us along the process. We want to get some footage and documentation of things that are going on in the community. So one of our first stops was the mall. And through those interviews, one in every three people, actually no, two in every three people, and this was documented with photography and just different notes that we posted on our page, anywhere from a youth as young as fifteen to adult women that were managing stores at the time. Everybody was bringing up Domestic Violence Services or a need for either bringing awareness to it or having tools to kind of help people through it. Some of this could have been through the exploitation of just resources and just people in general. When COVID nineteen was hitting, oftentimes during this time period, people are trapped with their perpetrators at home, and there's not even a way to escape because they can't go to school, they can't leave the house. So lots of people at that time had mentioned that Domestic Violence Services was definitely a thing. So that was the direction that Tri-Cities Women's March decided to go. That is when I came upon meeting Diana, and we started building a partnership and started thinking about ways to bring the resources to the community, and they tabled at our event, and our event was full of different stories and testimonies. And we chose again to do it in Pasco because there was no presence here. The following year, we had, I became a volunteer in between then, after building that relationship and really started volunteering. Prior to that, I also, yeah, so volunteer, we're gonna go into volunteering, we volunteered, went back out, did the same thing I've done before, working with people, interviewing, and we interviewed the different offices, all the businesses on Lewis Street. We also asked some of the constituents from the popular Albertson's on Twentieth and Court and the gym next door, and nobody within those few blocks knew anything about Domestic Violence Services. A lot of women had vacated domestic violence on their own, had to leave their homes, leave their family, be displaced, and just try to make it, and they had really awesome and great stories, and we bonded around them, but they had no clue that there was any services that were available to them at all. And so we took that information and we reshaped where we usually do our vigil, which is where I've seen her sister's story shared. We often will put up silhouettes kind of showing the number of victims that have passed away due to domestic violence in the Tri-City area. So through that story, through that experience, through the feedback directly coming from the community, Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin County decided to do their vigil in Pasco. That was huge. So people, not a lot of people were able to participate because the communication was weird, it was a rainy day, but there was a lot of impactful stories, and people just really shocked that we were even in Pasco, didn't know that we even existed. And then some of the follow-up on the organizations that were outside of the community, the relationship we built through the city, they just felt like, wow, so can we get services if anybody needs anything? It was just very, very clear that people were grateful that this partnership had been built, and I was, I was flattered that they decided to take the feedback from my experience the year prior, from my experience with just surveying that year, just to see what, what people needed, to shift their whole entire plan just to be present in Pasco when they're used to doing a huge event that's supported by Richland and Benton County. So I just hope that with the support of everything that I have to offer, what I've seen, that you would support them in finding a place here so that we can help the community that definitely, definitely has a need for service, whether it's marginalized communities, people of color, LGBT community, there's representation that is lacking here, and they're prepared to hold those people, you know, hand in hand and kind of give them the resources that they need to thrive. So I just want to say that not only as a volunteer and as a board member, but also as someone whose benefit from their services as well. They do great work. My life has been completely changed since I've been able to benefit from the resources, the education, and my kids and I are doing more than just surviving, we're thriving. So please consider helping us out with finding some way to find a home here. It would really help. Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us today. I don't know if there's any questions from anybody that came up to the podium?
Any questions or comments regarding this evening's presentation? It's been a long evening. Mayor Protamaloni, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you so much for everyone who spoke tonight. I had the pleasure of receiving an email from Dana Zegiri a few months ago, when she'd seen that the, we're looking at redoing the MLK Center as part of, and we have funding received from the state and federal governments to help do that, and it was kicking around the idea of, you know, can we reserve some space at that facility for an office for some amount of services as part of that? And, you know, I believe strongly that the need is there. I mean, I've had the, let's say displeasure of having to, you know, support a number of people through the sort of situations that you help support people through. And, you know, I did the best I can, but certainly someone who actually knows what they're doing, I'm sure could have, could have provided much better support. So I, I guess, I don't know quite how this needs to pan out or how best for the city of Pasco to support this, but I am supportive, and I would ask my fellow council members to be supportive as well. And, and, you know, I can't all be all at once, but certainly if the MLK Center is a right spot to make sure there is space for, you know, an important organization like this to, to have a home, it would be very, it would be very important for the city of Pasco and the people who live here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Without further comment from any of the other council members, I do want to share a little bit about myself. Something that I've not been widely open, some people know, some people that are close know that I am a survivor of domestic violence. My children and I are survivors. My children were kidnapped, actually, to make me go back to my ex-husband now. At the time, I wish I knew where to go. I wish I had the services available. I had nowhere to go. I did not know where the resources, resources were. It was only because I was at the hospital that I learned about services. So I do know there's a huge need in this area. There's a lot of individuals, there's a lot of, there's a need. And so, city Pasco, if we can support some way to partner and bring those services home for the benefit of the community, for the benefit of the individuals that have nowhere to go, have no voice, no support system. We need the support system here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Ms. Pacheco, if I'm not mistaken, there's an event happening here next month or something?
Yes. Diana, can you come up?
We'll have her present. This is our development director, Diana Zegiri.
Hi, good evening, council members and mayor. Yes, on June twenty-fourth, we will be having our annual fundraiser. It's our premiere event. It is a golf tournament. It's scheduled at Canyon Lakes Golf Course. And we probably should have put that in your packet, but we do have our website. All the information is there on the website, and anyone can contact either one of us, and we will provide that. Like I said, that's our annual event, and it is pretty good. We have lots of prizes and trophies, and we also have a silent auction. So if anyone is interested in knowing more, please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And Mayor Protamaloni, you have a letter invite, if I'm not mistaken, regarding the tournament, the golf tournament? Okay, so I think I have that letter. I will make sure to forward it to our clerk and make sure that is disseminated with all the council members and staff, and invite anyone in the community, organizations that are out there and want to help our community, bring services to those that are in need, those that do not have a voice, those that are afraid to speak up, speak out, or have nowhere to go. Please reach out. Please support the tournament. Please sponsor. Again, I can't express, please help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Seeing that, thank you again for bringing the presentation this evening to the city of Pasco.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. Thanks.
And with that, we move on to item B on our agenda, Transportation Improvement Plan Update.
We have our city engineer, Mr. Dan Ford, who will be presenting on the topic to council.
Thank you.
Lift the mic up a little bit. Good evening, mayor and council. Welcome to a very long evening. So, I'm gonna speak a little bit about the heritage, the transportation planning for the Heritage Industrial Center. The Heritage Industrial Area is an exciting area for the city of Pasco and one that has received quite a bit of attention over the years with infrastructure improvements such as roadways and utilities, which has created a, a strong backbone that attracted the Amazons that are currently being completed. A big part of our focus now is how do we ensure connectivity to keep traffic moving efficiently, but to do so with safety as a priority. You may recall the flyer. I've got a, a copy of, of one of the figures right up here on the screen, shared by WashDOT back in two thousand and nine. And I know we've talked about this in some other presentations that I had done for the area, in which areas of US twelve were being evaluated. That effort has not progressed and in fact, what we have seen are movements being restricted due to safety concerns such as left turn at A Street. But recent efforts by the city and its legislative delegation have encouraged WashDOT to reengage in the issue. We'll, we'll put it that way. But the lack of US twelve development necessitates additional work on the city's part to mitigate those impacts, such as Road Forty East Extension, which you know about most recently, and the WashDOT turnbacks, which are maybe not so well-known, but play a large role in connectivity for this area. See if I can get down to the Here we go. So, I want to walk through some of the planning projects that we've got out in the Heritage Industrial Area. And I figured the best way to do this is use essentially the same slide that's on the memo that was attached in your packet. So, again, we want to kind of look at this and, and the memo that was attached was specifically for connectivity and then also some recommendations on some future contemplation for classification of roadway. You'll notice that in there as well. So, Road Forty East Extension, again, hopefully you can follow my cursor a little bit here. That's the one that I mentioned that you are probably aware of as part of the improvements for the intersection of, of A Street and Road Forty East associated with the Amazons. That area is going to also be improved and the intent is to connect that road to the north. We've been working not only with the property owners that you're aware of adjacent to this, but also to the north of this to make that connection. Part of the ability to make that connection has been WashDOT's willingness to work with us and understanding the connectivity issues that we have out here on US twelve. And so, there has been, I didn't mean to do that, there has been some turnback of right-of-way specifically down pretty much right underneath where this twelve is shown here, but that has allowed us to make that connect, connectivity. We're also working with some property owners just north of this as well, and they've been really positive in working with the city to make this work. And I think this is gonna have some huge impacts on the ability not to have to access the current at-grade crossing at A Street, which has caused a lot of concern for WashDOT and for everybody else. Keep doing that. Some of the other planning areas that we've got is out here on Elman Cedar. You'll probably remember that we've been talking a little bit about Local Bounty, who's currently on delay. There are several other property developments going on out there that necessitate the need for a little bit higher level of planning. You'll see some of the other streets, Cedar as well, that we're planning on. And again, this isn't every street out here, but these are what we consider some of the major contributors to the area as far as providing that connectivity. You'll also notice in the same area, C Street and D Street, and again, I've taken the liberty, liberty of adding some names from adjacent streets that may or may not be in alignment. You'll also notice Heritage Boulevard extending to the south. For those that may have not noticed that, that is intended to be a four-leg intersection. It's actually built on this, with the southern leg, maybe not signalized at this time, but, but it is intended to be a, a four-way intersection. And then the, named by me, I'm sure this will change, but Burbank Road, as it is shown here in this figure, along with both Heritage, Burbank and Road Forty East, as well as Sacagawea Road, which I'll get to next, some proposed classification, if you will. And then the Sacagawea Road realignment. And again, if we look back at the WashDOT flyer from two thousand and nine, they had something very similar to this. And again, we've taken what, where we are today with this and, and tried to take that into account. One of the bigger issues for me or one of the things that I try to look at, again, is from a connectivity standpoint. If we are going to do anything with the at-grade crossings, either at A or Sacagawea slash Tank Farm, which is closer to the Snake River, we've got to start thinking about how do we make the local road connections? We can't just plop some sort of improvement down at US twelve and hope that the roads will align. By the time we get to do that, everything will be developed and it'll be very difficult to be able to get roads in there. So, again, this is taking off of that original flyer to a certain degree, done back in, in two thousand and nine. The other turnback with WashDOT, and again, I think it's very important having their participation in this, would be on the, on the, basically the north side of US twelve. There you'll see a orange or, or line that connects up. And this has been an area from Tank Farm all the way up to A Street that was frontage or turnback right-of-way that WashDOT I'm working through right now to gain. And so, the remainder of that would be from, from this point on up to convention, to be able, be able to make that connection. But again, really important, some of the comments that we've received, and again, I, I, I know that I'm kind of just flashing right through this because it's, it's late in the evening, but many of the comments that we've received from WashDOT have been, how are you utilizing local connections to be able to make more access up to the existing grade-separated connection? And, and take people off of those at-grade crossings. And so, for example, the Road Forty East Extension, which again, I know was, we talked about earlier, and this connection on the other side of US twelve allow some of those fuel trucks and whatnot to be able to get up to that grade-separated connection. And, and that's really important. If anybody's actually pulled out onto US twelve at Sacagawea and especially tried to go north, that is quite the experience because they're coming upgrade, crossing the river and crossing that bridge. And, and it's very difficult for folks to, to be able to see that. And I think too, finally, it's important to note that the original trans, original transportation planning of the area did not contemplate the change in land use from residential to industrial that incurred long before you folks were in the seats that you are today. All of these factors combined resulted in the need for additional efforts to reevaluate the situation and make adjustments, which we have been working on for more than a year. So, I'll leave it at that and try and answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments from council, Councilor Serrano? Sorry, Campos.
I'm not that good-looking.
It's a long evening.
I'll keep it, keep it brief. I did get an email. So, remember we received something on the bench here a couple of weeks ago about the concerns of Highway twelve and A Street. I did get an email from Todd Penayer from the WA DOT. I did share this email with Dave and I don't know that any of you got to see it, but it, but it did talk about some concerns and some of the statements that came back from WA DOT. It sounds like those are being worked on and mitigated. Initially, the email read something along the lines of, as new development is being proposed, we continue to analyze what we call level of service. Paraphrased based on the studies we have reviewed, we anticipate intersections of US twelve and Tank Farm with US twelve and A Street to have an acceptable level of service, even after developments are completed. So, it sounds like you guys are working on maybe revising that statement to, to come up with something that's a little bit different. Maybe to, to flow traffic outside of those particular ones to maintain the current level of service. Just sounds like you guys are working, working things out.
We are. We're, we're, we're trying to make alternative routes, which is very important. Like I said, right now on the north side of US twelve, it's, there are no alternative routes to be able to get up to the grade-separated crossing, which is again, the safest approach. We've been in, in several different, especially this last year, several different meetings and discussions with WashDOT as to the availability of auctions out here, what kind of connection we can have. We've gone through everything from, yeah, there's no way that you can make a connection or touch our infrastructure at all because we have no money to, you know, what about the opportunity for a roundabout at a certain point? And again, local roadway connections is very important, so I'm very excited about any kind of connection that I can have for that. But again, providing alternate routes, both the, the road on the north side and East Road Forty connection provides some alternate and safe routes.
Okay, great. So, with that said, does, does the rest of council want to see this email from WA DOT? Do you, do you care?
Yes.
Consent? I'll, I'll ping Dave again. Do you want me to CC you, Debbie, to make sure that it gets to the rest of council? And then I'll be sharing a lot of this feedback with Good Roads when we have our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further comments, Mayor Potemaloni?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Bronson. Thank you, Mr. Ford, for your, your conversation here. Certainly supportive. A question for you is the Road Forty Collector Extension there to the north, then how does that tie people back into, to get to Highway twelve? So, or do they have to head west over to Heritage and then back, then back up to Lewis Street to be able to get on? So, it's gonna kind of jog over to the west and then back up north?
Yeah, right now, the only route available to folks is, is down A Street and then to Heritage, Heritage and then north. So, again, this is gonna provide a, a signalized route directly to the north that would connect into East Lewis Place and then over to Heritage or Lewis Place. It's kind of interesting how the names have stayed the same for the overpass.
Great. Appreciate that. Yeah, I think we've all been really concerned about how the additional traffic, especially truck traffic, is gonna affect the safety of the neighborhoods there. There's a lot of, there's a lot of people who live there in the Tierra Vida neighborhood, but also in the Mobile Home Park there to the south. You know, that's, this, it's a scary thing for someone who's already struggling with resources in general to be able to now have to navigate that amount of traffic and a potential additional impact. So, anything we can do to help with that, I, I appreciate that and I appreciate the background here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Just wanted to say thank you for your efforts and for the other staff and public works who have been communicating with WashDOT and expressing all the need for safety, but as well as the, the change in use in that area and how we've evolved and so their additional attention on this. Thanks.
Thank you again, Mr. Ford. Excellent presentation. Thank you for the options and the communication as everyone else has already expressed. This is much needed. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right. And with that, I am in the wrong agenda. We are actually skipping over our last item, the Ask Pasco app. And we're going to move along to item six, Miss Lena's council discussion. None listed?
None at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And if I'm not mistaken, item seven, we do have need for an executive session?
Yes, unfortunately, we do.
I wanted to talk about a couple of things at six, if I could, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'll, I'll keep, I'll keep, it's okay. I have just two things. I want to keep it real brief. Again, my, my passion project has been arts and culture in the downtown and I see Rick White is not here. So, I was just hoping to ping, see if we had an estimated timeline for when we might have a code revision to allow more murals in the downtown Pasco. And then the follow-up question for that is, do we have a timeline or estimated debrief for the Cinco de Mayo Festival?
We will make sure we have those answers to you by, by next week.
I'm writing this down.
No next one.
They ac, they actually did have a slight debrief. I forgot about that on Thursday. We did meet on Thursday briefly. Yep. This week has gone by really fast and it's been a long night. But they only, they didn't have financial, total financials yet, so they didn't get a debrief on that. But they had about, based on cell phone pings, I think in attendance for the whole week from Sunday to Sunday, it was about like fifteen thousand in attendance roughly. So, just to kind of give you an idea.
Tri-City Tourism gave you those numbers, didn't they?
Uh, no, actually. No.
Watching our cell phones.
Yep. Somebody's big brother's watching, so. So, just keep that in mind when you're using your cell phone. So, that's what they, they use to get an idea of the number of attendance for the Cinco de Mayo week festivities, so. And more to come, of course, on the financials once they're done calculating and receiving the rest of the sponsorship monies.
Thank you. So, with that, we actually do have an executive session, as much as, as late as it is, twenty minutes, if I'm not mistaken?
No, we can do this in ten.
Ten minutes. Thank you. Thank you. So.
What's for?
The executive session, and I was gonna get to that. So, executive session is a discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero LI for ten minutes, joined by our Mr. Ferguson and Ms. Sigdell, Director Sigdell. And we will be back in, we said ten minutes at?
Ten oh seven.
Ten oh, ten oh seven. And we are back from our executive session. It is now ten oh seven. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.